Meeting of City Commissions called to order. Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Here.
Dr. Estrop?
Here.
Mrs. Houston?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Rue?
Here. Right.
Yes, Commission, we have one work session item tonight and with us is the Director of Clark County Park District, Leigh Anne Castillo, and she's going to present on investment in our parks.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners for having me tonight. I did prepare the slides and you have that at your seat as well as the newest summer activity guide that was mailed to every resident in Clark County, but we also have extras at the table if anybody needs one or wants one for a family member or friend. So just in 2011, we passed our first ever park levy and from that time, there were members of the community that were looking to see how we could join the two park districts again. So after a 12-year engagement, we finally merged the two and just celebrated our one-year anniversary on May 1st. So we're very excited about the merger taking place and happening. So right now, we're still going with both of our logos and both of our names so that people can understand who we are and what we do, but our legal name is and always will be the Clark County Park District. We have been through a lot of different iterations. The first park system in this area began in 1895 when the Snyder brothers donated the Snyder Park land to forever and always be parkland. So we're very thankful to them. And then in 1977, we did sorry, we did form the Clark County Park District and it's been serving. And at the time of the merger, they had six park properties and two multi-use trails. And National Trail was born in 1999 when the city of Springfield Parks and Recreation Department and the Clark County Parks and Recreation Department joined and NTPRD was formed and we do manage 24 parks. So that is the history we have. This is just giving you a little bit of information about where we are today. We currently manage 33 parks and over 2,000 acres. We have 13 nature preserves, which a lot of people are very surprised to hear about when they hear that we have 13 nature preserves right here in Clark County, 52 different athletic courts, fields or diamonds, 12 miles of river, 164 acres of wetland, and 30 miles of paved trails with 18 playgrounds. And for those who might not know, we are a part of the largest continuous paved path system in all of the United States. In southwest Ohio, we have more than 350 miles of connected pathways. So that's exciting that it's right here in our backyard. We can jump on it in multiple places in the community and especially right downtown. Over the past 10 years, we've done quite a lot. We've had over 5,000 programs, almost 4,000 shelter rentals. We've planted 2,000 trees, 86,000 flowers, 2,700 tires and grocery carts have been pulled from our streams that run through our community. We've added 17 miles of hiking trails. We've restored 80 acres of prairie in the parks, added four new playgrounds, created the Gardens and Arboretum with the Master Gardeners, OSU Extension, Halandia Garden Association and the Kiwanis Club. We have the All-Access Playground at Snyder Park that was a gift from the Rotary and also Partners for the Park with Bethy's Sprayground. Our biggest project in recent years was the addition of or the renovation of the tennis courts and pickleball courts. The last time that I remember it being done was when I played in high school on those courts, which we won't talk about how many years ago that was, but that was much needed. So we're very excited that the city was helped in that effort after several years of fundraising and they are used every single day. We have priorities to have proactive management of our park properties. We want to be financially sustainable. We want to meet the community and resident needs for parks, recreation and activities. We are planning our solid operational management strategies, comprehensive law enforcement strategies within the parks, and our most important thing is to make sure that we're telling our story to the community. In recent years, we've worked with the city for community development block grants and part of that was the basketball court repaving and striping at Davie Moore. We have the accessible playground with a boxing theme that was added at Davie Moore last year, as well as the first permanent concrete skate park that was added to Davie Moore, and then a pump track at Sherman Avenue. And these community development block grants can only be used in certain parks and we only have three parks within the city of Springfield that those can be used in, and that's Sherman Avenue, Davie Moore and Selma Road. So we're looking at other opportunities we may have in the future to use those funds to create new spaces within those parks. Here's a picture of the basketball courts, the pump track, the playground, and then the skate park. Our other community partners, I'm going to show you the pictures of those. We have the city invested with the new bridge at Snyder Park because the other one was not sufficient for the traffic that was needed. The Rotary Centennial Playground at Snyder Park, Bethy's Sprayground, which I spoke of, the gardens and also the development of the Kirby Preserve with the Springfield Conservancy District. So these are just some of the pictures there that you can see of the beautiful spaces that we have in those parks. The next set of community partners that we have to talk about are we have the development of the Mad River Gorge and that is with the Ohio Climbers Coalition and we have now have grants to put a bridge across the Mad River so that they can not only climb on the south side of Mad River, but also on the north side and we're working towards that project this year. We have used the Trout Unlimited Partnership to remove Honeysuckle at Riley River Play Preserve. That's down in the bottom left-hand corner. That's an observation deck that is there and we will soon have a kayak and canoe launch as well as parking available for the community. We worked with Hazy Shade Golf for the disc golf course at Snyder Park and we worked with Dr. King to create our second dog park. The one at Snyder Park is called Central Bark and as you can see there, the entrance looks like the entrance at Western Avenue. Another that was with the prior slide with the basketball courts is we worked with my brother's Keeper Alliance to install glass backboards at Davie Moore Park. Other park enhancements, I've talked about these, the eight pickleball courts and three tennis courts, which you can see pictures of those, new playground at New Reed Park, also one at the Lane Edition Park off of Burnett Road. We have the addition of the Warder Fit Stop and that was a Ohio Department of Health grant that we received. And then we also have a multi-use trail connection at John Street that the city worked on for many years, a nature playground, which is called Mitchell Meadows, which is behind the baseball stadium and our offices on Mitchell Boulevard. And so we're very excited about all of those projects that have been happening as well. Other park enhancements where we upgraded the trailhead and added permanent restrooms at Beatty Station up in that left-hand corner. We added 17 miles of hiking trails at Kirby Preserve, Rebert Pike Nature Park, the Mad River Gorge, and we're very excited to have those nature areas available for people to take advantage of. We've added a shelter at Perrin Woods Park, which was a national sorority, had their Founder's Day and two of their founders lived on Singer Street, right by Perrin Woods. So it was very appropriate to have them have a shelter in that park. We've planted, as I said before, nearly 2,000 trees and 86,000 flowers that you see around the community on our bridges. They've been in the Esplanade and in various park settings. So it's very exciting that we're able to grow that on our own. In addition to the trees we've planted, the city does have a tree nursery on the former Snyder Golf Course back behind the Victory Garden and that enables the city staff to grow trees and plant them instead of having to purchase them from other parts of the country and have them shipped here. We've paved four parking lots and seal-coded nine over the last several years and the picture at the top in the middle is the prairie, part of the prairie that had been preserved and restored at the old Kirby Farm just to the east of Old Reed Park. Talking about many things that we've had over the years, these are some of the foundations that we have received grants from recently. One that we just received was from the Crable Family Foundation and that will allow us to do the renovations at the Davidson Interpretive Center on Lower Valley Pike. We want to make that a place that we can still learn the history of the Battle of Pecowee with George Rogers and the Shawnee, but also to have a place to learn the history of the parks in our community. We want it to be rotating information so there's a reason to come back again, have a play area for kids, but then also very interactive displays. So we're working with the Crable Family Foundation on that. Each year, we've received grants from the Clark County Combined Health District, whether it's trail markers on the trails for safety issues or shade structures or redevelopment of our nature park. They've been very active in giving us those. We've had a lot of help from the Wilson Cheon Foundation and all of these groups that are listed here have secured grants either on a regular basis for ongoing programs or special things that we've done. So we appreciate all of those partnerships and the grants that we have received from those communities, community foundations. And then the next slide just has some different pictures from around the parks, in Snyder Park, Old Reed Park, of course Splash Zone. If you ever want to see thousands of people in one place on a Saturday in the spring or fall, you just head out to Eagle City Soccer Complex. It's amazing to see how many people are jammed into that area. And then there we go. George Rogers Historical Marker, Horstmann Lake at George Rogers, the historic Kurtzler House, the Carlton Davidson Stadium, some pictures from the Mad River Gorge, another picture from the Davie Moore Playground. I just wanted you to be to see some of these things that we have. We are going to be hosting some tours in this summer and fall and I'll get the dates out to the Commissioners. So if you want to join us for those, we're going to try to do them in mornings and afternoons so you can attend what you're able to. But I would just like to thank the city for the support that we have. We have a great partnership and a contract for us to manage and maintain the parks that you own and we couldn't do what we do without all of you and also the in-kind services that we are provided to make sure that we can work on a daily basis. So thank you for that and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Leigh Anne, I just want to express gratitude for your passion for your job and I've been on your board before and just appreciate your leadership and it's obvious all the vision that you have for our parks and our community and I mean it, I thank you so much for what you do. Other comments from Commissioners? Dr. Estrop?
Congratulations. A great presentation. Keep up the good work for the people of Springfield and Clark County. You've got a great team. You're providing a lot of opportunities for people and we just keep expanding those opportunities. So keep up the great work and thank you for sharing this with us.
Thank you.
I just want to reiterate that so much thanks to the park system, you, your staff, your board, for the work that you do. The parks are such an asset to us. All the programs you provide. I mean, I grew up running around in the parks, right? We all have a history of running around in our parks and you're creating that opportunity for generations to come. So thank you. I'm always cheering to have the rocket slide brought back. I'm just saying.
We did find one.
My best days.
We did find one. It's not like the original, but we did find a rocket slide. We just have to have a large fundraiser to make that happen.
Okay, I'm giving that up then.
I'm wondering if Chris Moore could probably build one for it.
He already has one.
There he is tonight. He's not busy at all.
No, not at all. He's probably got one in his.
He's probably got one in his garage. But while I've got the microphone, thank you so much for everything that you do. Ruben Andy Phillips Brown and I utilize the parks constantly, and Ruben is my lovely pit bull rescue, so he enjoys the parks. Thank you, we appreciate you.
Thank you all for having me.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn the work session?
Second.
Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes. Public hearing scheduled for 6:50 is called to order. Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Here.
Dr. Estrop?
Here.
Mrs. Houston?
Sorry. Call me doctor.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes. Has proper legal notice been given for this hearing?
Notice of a public hearing for the notice of a 30-day public comment period and public hearing for the fiscal year 2025 to 2029 Consolidated Plan and Fiscal Year 2025 Action Plan was published in the Springfield New Sun, a newspaper of general circulation within the city. Attached Tier Two is a true and fresh copy of the legal notice published on June 9, 2025.
I move that the communication be ordered, received, recorded in the minutes, and filed.
Been moved and seconded. Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes. Staff report?
Good evening. Need just a second to get my bearings here.
All right, very good. Mayor Rue, commissioners, good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today regarding Springfield's program year 25 to 29 consolidated planning process. So game plan for today, I will provide you with an overview of the consolidated plan. What is it? Why do we do it? And why does it matter? From there, we'll walk through our engagement strategies, we'll review some survey results, and then discuss the draft budget. We'll wrap up this evening by outlining next steps and highlighting key deadlines that I'd like to make both you and the community aware of. Please keep in mind to facilitate our consolidated planning process. We have partnered with ProAmerica, so you may hear me mention them throughout today's presentation. What is the CON Plan? It's a five-year strategic planning document that is required by HUD, and essentially it outlines our community's needs, priorities, and strategies for federal funds to address housing, to address homelessness, and community development as a whole. If you've read through the draft plan that's available online, you know that this is quite a comprehensive document, nearly 200 pages of data and information that really outlines the needs of Springfield. So ultimately, this helps us align our local goals with federal objectives and guides annual local needs with spending. Community engagement, so engaging our community really does ensure that our plan reflects actual local needs and not just, you know, assumptions on our part. We hosted a total of eight meetings with the community for a consolidated planning process, which is really a key step in ensuring both transparency and meaningful community input. Just to give you a little insight, all of our meetings kind of started with and really covered this idea of what would you do with $11 million over the next five years? We posed that question to every group. And the $11 million is making a couple of assumptions on our part. Number one, that we'll receive funding over the next five years, which of course we do not know at this point. As you know, the president's fiscal year '26 budget does not include and looks to eliminate both CDBG and home funding. As of today, with some minor revisions, the Senate did pass that budget, and so it's heading to the House. And then, again, with CDBG and home not included. And then that second assumption is that if we were to receive funding, that it would remain relatively steady when it comes to numbers that we've received in the past. So we receive about $2.3 million annually from HUD. So when we say $11 million, again, that's assuming that we won't see any significant decreases in funding. But for the CON Plan, we have to go through that process and assume that we will receive funding, and that information was shared with the community and with partners. So these meetings and these community groups that you see, these community meetings that were held, really brought together residents, neighborhood leaders, park community partners, housing advocates, business owners, and direct service providers to share their perspective with us to ensure that it is included in our consolidated plan. In addition to our in-person and virtual meetings, we also released a community survey that was open for a little bit over a month. I do want to note that within 48 hours of the survey opening, nearly 187 people did take that survey. Our consultant said, and I had to go back and find this email last night, our consultant said, and I quote, "Holy cow, I don't think I've ever seen this level of engagement occur so quickly in a community." And keep in mind, you know, they do business across the country. So to me, that kind of turnout reflects a community that's paying attention and one that wants to be heard. We received a total of 100, excuse me, 579 completed surveys. We asked 21 questions total, and I just want to highlight a few key takeaways today. Here's one question that was asked, and these are ranked in order of priority based off of the survey. So participants were asked to rank their overall priorities. You can see community service rose to the top, public improvements, housing, business job opportunities, and public facilities. I'd also like to say that a majority of the survey results, I would say we were expecting, that's what we hear out in the community, that's the feedback that we're receiving. But I will say that the answers to this particular question surprised me a little bit just how high mental health services ranked. And I took a minute to ponder on what this says, and ultimately, this high ranking, I think, reflects a broader national and cultural shift that we're seeing. Mental health is no longer as taboo as it used to be, and people are willing to talk about it and prioritize it and clearly advocate for it, and this survey shows that our community is no different. So as we know, mental health is, you know, a foundation to overall well-being when it comes to just self, housing stability, economic security, et cetera. Input from eight sessions and our survey have really helped us shape our priorities, as we'll talk about in the next slide here, from funding emergency repairs to housing rehab to supportive services that stabilize households, and I believe that's reflected in our draft consolidated plan. You can see some more housing issues prioritized from code enforcement to increased affordable housing, assistance with qualified home buyers, et cetera. Let's talk budget. So this is included in our draft plan, which again is available online, and then we also have a full copy, a couple of full copies available as well here in City Hall. As you can see, home funds to build and rehabilitate affordable housing, assist low-income renters and home buyers, supporting housing stability and neighborhood revitalization continues to be a top priority for us. You can see rehab. Following that, NHP runs our home repair program, and that's simply important because, you know, it works to protect neighborhood stability, preserving our aging housing stock, and promotes health and safety and dignity within our community. Demo's another one specifically in our Engage Neighborhood Plan that you can see that we've prioritized quite a bit over the next five years as well. Where are we today? The city issued a public notice in the newspaper that really initiated the public comment period for our consolidated plan, and then also announced this public hearing tonight. I want to make sure that the community knows and that you all know, as the commission, that there are still opportunities to engage with us and participate in the consolidated planning process. Like I said, the plan is available online, but I also have some summary documents, so if anybody would like to see a summary of the consolidated plan, if you don't want to read the 200-page document, I do have some of those available with me, but if you're reading through the plan or you're reading through the summary and you have feedback for us, we encourage the community to send that. Thought I saw Matty. Oh, Matty's over in the corner there. Matty Jones will be collecting that input to ensure that it's included, so of course you can send information and feedback back to the email listed on the slide. And then last but not least, key deadlines that I wanted to make the commission aware of. This will be a first reading, next meeting July 15. And another key deadline is that by August 16 of 2025, we must submit the consolidated plan to HUD. That is our drop-dead date, no flexibility there. Obviously, we'll submit it quite a bit before then. Early August is our target date, but those are just some few deadlines to be aware of. Thank you. Standby for any questions.
Thank you.
That you may have.
Appreciate the report. Is there comments from commissioners?
Sorry about that. Just really quickly, can you give the specific website? Can you just read that off for the record, just in case anyone was wondering where to go to find this?
So the consolidated plan is available at SpringfieldOhio.gov. I believe it's slash consolidated plan, but I will say in the search engine, if you're unable to find it or navigate it, you can put in CON Plan, you can put in Consolidated Plan, both will work, it'll take you directly to that page.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Other comments?
I just want to thank you for your work on this. I've learned so much by listening to you and your presentations. So you had two town hall meetings, is that what you called them?
Two public meetings.
Public meetings, okay. What was the attendance at those meetings? The one I was at, two people were there.
I believe the first one that was held at United Senior Services, we had about 10 folks in attendance. I can get you those exact numbers from the sign-in sheet. I will say Commissioner Tackett, and I did see her after the town hall, and she said, "Logan, are you disheartened that we haven't had a whole lot of participation at this last public input session?" And what I told her is, as great as I think that I am, and as fun as the city is to be around, I understand that folks may not want to spend Saturday morning with us when there's a Juneteenth celebration, and there was a lot going on. The farmer's market was that morning, so I recognize that, and they may not want to spend the evening with us either, after a long day's work. But I will say that we've given multiple mediums for the community to engage with us, both in person, in a survey, public comments still open, so we are receiving feedback via email. So although we didn't have a whole lot of participation in those public input sessions, I think we've still had great participation from the community overall.
And I see that effort and recognize your effort to communicate. I just want to make sure we keep going with that and expanding on opportunities and increasing communication. We have things like that. Thank you.
Other comments? Dr. Estrop?
I wanted to thank you and your staff for all the work on this. I know it's a tremendous undertaking to put this plan together. I think I heard you say that this money, all 11 million of it, is not in the Senate's version of the budget bill at the federal level. Did I hear you correctly?
I will say that CDBG and home are not included. ESG, an expanded ESG, is included, which is our smallest funding source that works primarily with homeless and homelessness prevention, but CDBG and home are two largest funding amounts from HUD are not included.
That would significantly impact our ability to deliver those services to people in this community, correct?
Yes, sir.
I just think folks need to understand that, that the discussions at the federal level and at the state level that have occurred have an impact right here in Springfield and Clark County. Some of the things that we've been able to provide for are in question, very much in question. So I just think it's important to note that. I have a report later in the agenda to present, to update where we stand right now, but I thought it was important, because what I've heard from the community are those things that you have listed on your presentation, Logan, and I am delighted to see mental health move up as a need. It's unfortunate those seem to be at risk right. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there comments from the audience on this hearing only? If you have a comment, you can go to the podium, speaking about this hearing only. Hearing nine, is there a motion to adjourn this hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Just wait a couple minutes, and then we'll begin our meeting. The final meeting of city commissions called to order. Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Here.
Dr. Estrop?
Here.
Mrs. Houston?
Here.
Mrs. Tackett?
Here.
Mr. Rue?
Here. Please stand for the invocation and pledge.
For God, I again come before you and ask for peace for our community. I ask you to give us wisdom tonight to govern this city in the forward direction in your name. Amen.
Is there a motion to approve minutes from last meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Clerk call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Commission continues to hold comments in the beginning of the meeting for this reason to have productive dialogue and engagement with our community. Public comments will be heard for those individuals that have provided the proper identification and are Clark County residents. No comment cards will be accepted after 15 minutes after the beginning of roll call. We're truly committed to making this meeting where people have the opportunity to share their ideas, thoughts, and concerns. The commission's staff are actively listening, taking notes, and there will be answers following your comments at the end of the comment period. If there are, we are absolutely not, we are for First Amendment rights, and you have that right as you're here. However, we do hold the right to hold this meeting in a very peaceful manner. Any disruptions or conduct that impedes an orderly progress of this meeting will not be tolerated. Should any individual be escorted or asked to leave due to disruption, disruptive behavior on three separate occasions, they'll be notified they're considered trespassing and are barred from attending future city commission meetings. After this public comment period time, again, we'll respond to matters during the comment period and ask the city manager and appropriate staff to answer any questions. If there's additional research needed for these questions, we will follow up with the individual asking the questions within two to three days, and also post the information that we're able to on the website in answer to those questions. We'll begin with Beth Donahue.
Thank you. Springfield has over 200 serial domestic violence offenders roaming free and over 20 serial rapists, and Springfield has no way to track them. The story of Adam Humphries, born August 10, 2005. On May 30, 2024, Adam Humphries, on or near the intersection of McCrady Avenue and Simon Kenton Trail, did by force and threat attempt to rape a victim under the age of 13. Humphries removed her from another place where he restrained the victim against her liberty and will to engage in sexual activity. Adam Humphries punched and strangled the victim, knocking the victim to the ground where he attempted to sexually assault her. But Springfield and... But Springfield MPD and Clark County Sheriff knew of Adam Humphries. How? Because in June of two thousand and nineteen, a Springfield woman was grabbed and tackled to the ground, and the offender attempted to rape her on the bike path near her home on Red Coat. But this assault was never brought to Clark County courts. It was sent to Shelby County Juvenile Court, even though the crime occurred in Springfield. Since the two thousand and nineteen event, Adam Humphries was listed in a sex offender database, but his name was only visible to the sheriff's office of Clark County. Why? Because the offender database only lists offenders based on date of conviction. And since he was a juvenile at the at the time, the Sex Offender Database guideline requires no public notification that a sex offender lives at a residence. Humphries is now serving twenty-two years to life in prison. But this is the same story of inadequate protection that women in Springfield continuously face. Mayor, city manager, and commission members, if you seriously care about stopping violence against women and putting an end to domestic violence offenders and rapists, work with me to create a city ordinance that requires the names of arrested serial domestic violence offenders. Note, I said arrested, not convicted offenders. To be placed into a publicly available database, make the offenders pay for the registration, and allow women to examine who they are truly getting involved with. Thank you.
Thank you. Jimmy Stewart?
Good evening. According to the Ohio Incident Base Reporting System, annual arson counts for Springfield are as follows. Twenty eighteen, forty-four. They rose in two thousand and nineteen to forty-nine. In two thousand and twenty, they rose to fifty-three. In two thousand and twenty-one, they rose to sixty-three. Twenty twenty-two, they took a drop to forty-six, but in two thousand and twenty-three, it was seventy-two. That's a total of three hundred and twenty-seven arsons. And of that, less than four percent are clear. And Springfield ranks first in the state of Ohio per capita among all cities for arson. Springfield has been in the top three since two thousand and twenty. Question one. Today, in your response time to citizens' concerns, please provide the total number of structure fires per year from two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-four. This should be easy. We have the fire chief here, police chief here, Joe Allen's here. Question two. Does the city have the appropriate number of arson inspectors? What is the number of current arson inspectors, and does the city need to hire more? Question three. Question three has to do with the Springfield police asking for cooperation from Springfield citizens to provide information on shootings and murders occurring in Springfield. The question is going to be very straightforward. Please give citizens a reason as to why anyone should help the city when the city cannot be transparent and honest with its citizens. In fact, the city failed to correctly report the number of murder counts between two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-four. Fact, the city has failed to correctly report the number of municipal court case dismissals, over eighty percent and over eighty-five percent for domestic violence cases since two thousand and twenty-two. Fact, the city failed to submit Phase One report for the youth gun violence. Out of eighty-three recipients in two thousand and twenty-three, you were the only one that did not submit a report. Lastly, why are there no monthly crime statistics? You're paying Jason Vai over a hundred thousand a year. Is there a chance that we could get him to work on that and put them out? Remember, arrest, not call for service. Thank you.
Linda Bailey?
I have two questions first. How many green streetlights on East High Street have been hit by cars? And how much does it cost Springfield to replace each one? And since it's now illegal to maintain DEI programs, will you terminate Karen Graves' DEI position at an almost one hundred thousand dollar per year salary? Haitians exploited Springfield, Clark County, our state, and our nation's generosity for the last four-plus years. The time will soon come for their departure. We'll see how lawful and honest they are then. They have already created chaos on our streets, an increase in our insurance rates, deficits in our hospitals, poor learning experiences in our schools, increased court costs with more work for law enforcement, and brought bitterness to our community. They know this, and you know this too. However, it was oh so easy for you to accept as long as you thought that income taxes would flow like honey. When Haitians began jobs, they wanted the least amount of income tax withheld. So they claimed eight, nine, ten people as dependents, meaning less revenue for Springfield. For you not to see this coming shows your ignorance about Haitian culture and demonstrates your mindless rush to see Springfield's presumed honeypot begin to overflow. Your plan backfired, and Haitians ended up costing Springfield far more than they gave in return for our kindness and generosity. You depended on state and federal taxpayer funds to bail Springfield out of the hole you dug for us taxpaying citizens. You put all your eggs in the Haitian basket while leaving the rest of us to plug the hole in the boat that we are sinking in. Now the rats are jumping ship, and once again, the taxpayer is left holding the bag. President Trump offered Haitians the deal of a lifetime, providing them a free plane ticket to any country, plus one thousand dollars cash in their pockets to self-deport. Instead, many are stubbornly planning to remain regardless of the law that will soon take effect. The moral of this story, give Haitians an inch and they'll take a mile. Rob, you once said it hurt you to see Haitians losing hope when you were the one giving them false hope to begin with. You took off your mayor's hat and played nursemaid instead. That's why your personal reputation and status as mayor has suffered. You and the rest of the city commission are to blame for Haitians losing hope as none of you had the guts to stress upon them not to get too comfortable or to remind them that their legal status was only temporary. You led them on. Which locals will encourage Haitians to break the law? And which ones will knowingly break the law to warn, harbor, and protect Haitians when they officially become illegal aliens? We will soon find out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Darlene Yearley?
Ely?
Hi. Some of our elected elected political representatives and some Christian leaders have betrayed the majority of the citizens of this state and the Clark County community. They're not our big daddy. They're supposed to do what the majority wants, not what they think is good for us. The Haitians and our citizens were put in a precarious situation that mostly benefited people who would profit financially or support their pretentiousness. These people strove to bring jobs to our community, then supported bringing non-American citizens to fill those jobs with people that are so different, it caused utter chaos. In Springfield, we have billboards with a language I can't read. When I drive, I pray I don't get hit again by one of the many drivers on our streets that have been freely given licenses, who can't read road signs, can't speak English, many times uninsured, and don't know the basics of driving. Waitresses that don't know what an ice cream sundae is. City officials and some Christian leaders have made it clear they put non-citizens and their own agenda, personal agenda, over American citizens. We don't want to be bigger. We just want to have a small, caring, safe community that thrives within itself. We have serious issues that need to be addressed. It has been said I hate patients, that I think they're inferior and insinuated. I am wrong in God's eyes. Because of these people, the Haitians were brought into an environment totally unlike anything they knew. Because of this, the environment that I knew as America has been changed for the worse. A person of this community cannot voice their opinion safely if it differs from the agenda set up by the ruling class. We thought it was a good idea to hang small controversial banners up on the poles downtown. Who thought it was a good idea to allow over three hundred people to spew hatred, insults, and threats at one person who differed from their opinion and was non-threatening to them who was chanting God, country, and Trump, who allowed them to deny her her freedom of speech and safety? Mayor Rue, you say you'll follow the federal laws, but you know you and the many self-righteous do-gooders have laid the groundwork for resistance to these actions that the majority of the people voted for. You have fed the fires of anti-American activism in our community and in outsiders. You say our police force will be prepared to guarantee control for our safety. The rally you allowed, including outsider involvement, did not exhibit this.
Diane Daniel?
Good evening. This is one of those nights where I don't have any notes. I'm just gonna look you right straight in the eyes. Prior to two thousand and nineteen, I was your biggest advocate. I went home for Christmas, I went home for Thanksgiving, and I touted the virtues of Springfield. In fact, my nieces, who were in two thousand and fifteen, were looking for new jobs. I told them to come to Springfield. Both of them were nurses, that this would be a great place to live. In two thousand and nineteen, I went home for my very first class reunion, and we were asked to bring baskets that represented what we what we had, where we lived. I brought two because I wanted everybody to know how great Springfield was. But in the back of my mind as a teacher, there was a nagging, there was a nagging feeling. I couldn't figure out how I went from two Hispanics to be screened to twenty-nine in two thousand and twenty. Now I know why. Unfortunately, what you have done is you have driven out heritage citizens. The heritage citizens that have left have taken with them their money, their tax dollars, and in some cases, their small businesses. And they're never coming back. They will never come back there, ever, because they know what you have done. Not you personally, but the predecessors. You are just reaping what others have sowed. So I think you should take a good look at what happened before. And you're gonna have to make some amends. I don't know how you're gonna do it, but I'm sure that you will figure it out. An apology would be nice, an acclamation and a refusal of the welcome resolution would go a long way to healing some wounds. Thank you.
Stephen Foster?
Last time I was here, I told a little bit about myself. I am a heritage citizen, and I'm not going anywhere. Three minutes isn't much time to tell a life story, so I'm just gonna tell you a little story. It's about twenty years ago, I was a single parent. Circumstances allowed me to be a stay-at-home father. It's two thousand and nine, my son was out of the house, but my eighty-two-year-old mother was battling cancer and was living with me since chemotherapy and living alone isn't a good. I was living off some system temporarily. Whoever thinks that steak and champagne is terribly misinformed. It was the end of the month, the food stamps were gone. I made sure mom had food, but all I had was a bowl of Navy beans and a glass of water. I went out and turned on the computer, feeling sorry for myself. And before you say, he had internet but no food? Remember the old AOL desk thirty days free? Anyhow, I pulled up an article about Haiti. Due to earthquakes, hurricanes, crop failures, and civil unrest, poor Haitians were eating dirt cookies. Yeah, you heard that right, dirt cookies. There's a special kind of dirt. It's high in calcium. You mix it with lard, and it has no nutritional value, but it fills up your stomach. Suddenly, my beans and glass of water was a feast as I realized there were millions, if not billions, of people in this world that would love to have what I was eating, a simple bowl of beans and a glass of clean water. Imagine coming here from Haiti, walking into a Walmart and seeing more food than you'd probably seen in your entire life. A dozen different types of ketchup. They must have thought they had died and gone to heaven. And now we want to send them back to hell. Just a little something to think about tonight when you sit down for your supper. I know Kristi Noem says Haiti is safe to return to, but in the first six months of two thousand and twenty-five, extreme violence in Haiti killed about twenty-seven hundred people. Sexual violence and kidnappings are rampant. Almost one point three million people are internally displaced, and five point seven million people face acute hunger. And that's what you want to send them back to. Joni Ernst says we all die sometime, right? Hey, at least they got a taste of the good life that we get taken for granted, come down here and complain about. Thank you. Be in two weeks.
David Rose?
First of all, I want to apologize about the last meeting. But the way I was raised and brought up, if someone's addressing you, you focus in on them and address them back, don't be disrespectful. So when Mrs. Brown addressed me, that's why I was speaking back. Okay. Rob, I want a meeting with you and the chief police this week. We have to sit down, come up with a plan about the violence on these streets. The comment that was made at the end of the meeting, let's arm everybody, that's the wrong thing. You want to arm them, put a Bible in their hand, put them on their knees. Let's go back to what we need to do. Let's be peacemakers. Let's not be John Wayne out here on the streets no more. Since May fourteenth, when my son got killed, these streets have been in overtime. Sergeant Chief Elliott and her staff, I give you guys tremendous applause right now. I do, because they have worked overtime. Saturday night was all, was just stupid. But it goes back. I'm not blaming you guys. I'm not blaming nobody. It goes back to the home front. But it also goes back to the commissioners. I understand you say there's a lot of things out here, but when you put that pickle park out here, did you take a survey in the community with the kids and ask them what they would like to see? When we've done these marches out here, you know who I've seen out here? I've seen Sergeant, I've seen Chief Elliott out here. I've seen off-duty Clark County Sheriff Department. I've seen off-duty Springfield Police Department. I have not seen none of you commissioners at one of these marches. And you guys are supposed to be at the head front with us. Rob, I'm tired of hearing your excuses. You're more worried about putting money in Tony Smith's pocket than everybody else's than worried about the community. Let's pull together and put a plan in action. That's why I've been requesting a meeting with you, Sergeant, or Chief Elliott, and Chris, the Clark County Sheriff. If we sit down, we can come up with a plan. It's not that hard. We need to go back to where it was in the eighties and the nineties, where we all chipped in and worked together and worked together. You know, Saturday, highway hikers and all them. We were all over on the south, over right there on Yellow Springs Street. You know what? When them kids is out there playing in the rains and the parents, everybody was out there laughing, joking. We all had a good time.
Thank you for your comments. This is your time. Devin Hendricks?
Talk about the law, but let me stay on focus, man. President, all these felonies. All right, so I seen, I read an article today. You know, they took the money for the gun violence. You know, they took one point two, they got about four hundred thousand left. I just want to know what is 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 gonna be done with that four hundred thousand. That's that's a question I have. We always talking about numbers, so I I got a little numbers. My phone died. I actually wrote something for once, but I don't know. So one person, life lost, right? One person kills another person, that's one life lost, and that's another life in the penitentiary, right? At least five members of that family is lost. You got a mother grieving, you got a dad who got to live with his guilt. You got siblings. You got at least three friends. Least three friends is gonna probably spy out of, medicate theyself, liquor, whatever. liquor, whatever. Another one's gonna try to revenge they, they friend's death, you know, so they're going about back looking for more trouble. And it just really, really lowers the morale of this city. You know, we all feel it when somebody loses their life, especially a child. You get what I'm saying? So with that being said, let alone the money that it affects us too, you know what I mean? The money that we have to pay the police, the money that we have to pay the prosecutors to prosecute, the money that we have to pay the ambulance, you know what I mean? And also the money that is lost through the revenue that they could have, if they, if they lose their life at, let's say, twenty, you know what I mean? Twenty more years, that's lost revenue of taxes and all that other extra stuff, you know what I mean? Also, a life loss that could have actually been somebody. Uh, you looking at one of them, you get what I'm saying? I'd have been stabbed, shot, all that, you know what I'm saying? And the fact that I changed and I'm doing the things that I'm doing right now, you know, not only with the community around the world, you get what I'm saying? And I ain't even scratched the surface yet. So I say that to say this, though. I know where the gun violence is, how it's happening, and who's doing it. I know how it can change too. And it changes by investing in the youth. The youth is the future, we need to invest in the youth. And they not just gonna listen to anybody, like I said before, they gonna listen to people that have been through it and that, and that know exactly where they're coming from, you know? And they looking up to a person because they don't have no male figure in their household. So I want to say this, and talking about that old Haitian stuff, Make America Great Again, let's make Springfield great again. That's my time.
Thank you.
Hello, this is my first time doing this, so bear with me. Uh, I'm here for the Springfield scat bus, the thing that's going on there. Um, have any of y'all ridden the bus? Majority of you is probably no. Uh, if you have, great, do it again. Because there's a lot of people out there that need this, that need the fixed routes. It's probably not gonna happen, but they do need it. I need it. Um, I seen Tracy today. I wish I would have seen every single one of you today, that meeting they had, maybe you'd learn something. I learned today that the drivers are getting, are not having a good deal with this. Um, Pat, one of the drivers, God bless her, because she isn't from Springfield, and all the driver, they said that all the drivers that are gonna be in the vans are from Springfield. What about her? What if she wanted to do it? You know? Too bad. So sad. That's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Well, thank you again for letting me come here today. As a member of the Clark County Solar Alliance, I began my talk two weeks ago with my family's personal story, so I want to give you an update. Our electric bill went from a negative nine dollars and sixty-two cents to a plus six dollars and ten cents. It rose because we purchased an electric car and charging it uses more electricity. On the other hand, our gasoline costs, which averages ninety-five dollars and fifty-seven cents per month in 2024, are forty-sixty-three in May and forty-five seventy-seven in June. A small sample for sure, but trending in the right direction, and savings like these are eligible for the city as well. I also suggested at that time that the city join an organization called Power of Clean Future Ohio. Today, I want to tell you a little more about them and a couple of projects that they have been working on, that they have helped with. PCFO is a nonprofit founded in 2020. They are founded by, uh, various foundations such as the Energy Foundation, the Cleveland Foundation, the Gunn Foundation. They have eight full-time staff, they have programmers in southwestern Ohio, and as I mentioned the last time, over fifty communities have already joined PCFO. A story that ran in the New Sun on October fifth, 2024, told how Dayton received a nine million dollar grant from the Industrial Heartland Solar Coalition, which had previously received a hundred and fifty-six million dollar grant from the U.S. EPA's Solar For All Program to provide solar panels to middle and low-income areas across eight Rust Belt states, including Ohio. PCFO was instrumental in IHCS, IHSC getting that grant, of which Dayton was able to get their nine million dollars. PCFO can help with smaller projects as well. They assisted Moreland Hills with a solar project costing a hundred and thirty-five thousand. The village saved three thousand in just the first four months. The project is covering fifty, fifty percent of the electric cost for city hall, twenty percent of electricity cost over all of the city's facilities. PCFO is happy to come and meet with you in person. They have a step-by-step process whereby they meet with city officials, introduce themselves, explain their work, and in their words, for potential partnership and ownership with community schools. They would again, in their words, support local governments through the resolution process, then they would help with planning, team building, and finally, project launch. And what kind of project? The number of projects is limited only by our imagination. Imagine solar panels over the fire stations or the city hall, or providing solar panels for hundreds of families in Springfield the same way they have in the Dayton area. And imagine a project powering shops and restaurants over the Fountain Avenue area. And remember, it does not cost anything to join Power Clean Future Ohio. Thanks again for listening, and I'll talk to you again soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Amanda Richardson. I was born, I was born in Springfield and have lived here for most of my life. I am here today to demand answers from the city commission and the City of Springfield Police Department as to why I don't have my own personal police officer to escort me around in my daily life. How am I expected to go about my daily life bullying people and screaming about my personal repugnant political views when I don't have a police officer to coddle me and protect me from the consequences of my own actions? If I'm walking down the street and I trip and fall, I expect to have an officer ready to put a Band-Aid on my scraped knee and arrest anyone who laughs at me. If I stand outside in the hot sun for several hours and don't bring water or a hat, I expect a police officer to be there to provide me with what I need. Obviously, I am the most important person in this entire world, so I don't understand what you guys don't get about that. I also want to know, when you're going to illegally seize the Springfield News-Sun to force the paper to publish things that I wanted to publish, it doesn't matter that there are other papers, online blogs, streaming services, YouTube channels, and even television stations dedicated to my political point of view. I demand that the city make the New Sun reflect my political views because, again, I am the most important person in the world. It doesn't matter if what I demand is illegal and nonsensical, I expect you to do it anyway because my brain has divorced itself from reality. Speaking of being divorced from reality, I know that all of you commissioners and every person who worked for the city is participating in trafficking immigrants to Springfield. There is no way people would ever immigrate to Springfield. It's not like we have low cost of living compared to other areas of the country and are in a desirable location to several major metropolitan areas with warehousing and manufacturing jobs in the vicinity of our city and county. And immigrants don't just immigrate near people, other people from their culture, that's not why Italian Village or German Village in Columbus are named that way. I haven't found any proof of anyone on the city commission or who works for the City of Springfield participating in human trafficking of immigrants, but that doesn't mean it's not happening. If I found evidence of it, it means you're doing it, and if I didn't find evidence of it, it means you're still doing it, but you're just very good at hiding it. Whatever I think is obviously true because I'm a genius, and so if I think you're doing something illegal, then it means you are no matter what. I figured out just why this is all happening. It's all because of you, Mayor Rue. Not only did you make me pay for my own dog's cremation with my own money, which is an insult because as a taxpayer, he should just do anything I ask for free outside of his role as the mayor, but he didn't even say thank you. I got a lovely card expressing sympathy for losing my dog, but not a thank you, hal gauche. Anyway, I know why Mayor Rue is doing all of this human trafficking that I have zero evidence for. He wants to turn Springfield into Little France, or should I say, Le Petit France? He wants Haitian immigrants specifically because some of them speak French, and it's plain as day why. Rue means street in French. Non, maire Rue, je ne veux pas tourner de Springfield. Merci.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and city commissioners, I want to congratulate you on all of your great work you have been doing for our community and our great city of Springfield. We have beautiful parks, community gardens, new schools and libraries, Springfield Farmers' Markets, free events provided by the Summer Arts Council, City and County Combined Parks and Recreation, along with Clark County Combined Health Department, Heritage Center Museum, Historical Society, Springfield Museum of Art, Fairgrounds and Champion City Center Arena, Mercy Health, Springfield Regional Medical Center and Cancer Center, Rocking Horse Community Health Center, the Underground Railroad, Gammon House, Hartman Rock Garden, Vital Churches, the Prairie Style Westcott House, designed by Frank Lloyd Wright, Champion City Kings Baseball, local foundations such as Springfield, Turner, Carlton Davis, and Clark State, and Community Health. We have the Kuss Auditorium, Turner Studio, Project Jericho, the Literacy Center, John Legend Theater, Myers Market by Cohatch, Historical State Theater, and Bushnell Center, uh, Whittenburg University, and Clark State College, along with Global Impact STEM Academy. With many new housing projects, all through partnerships, collaboration, and vital communication with Springfield residents provided by our city commissioners, city staff, and boards. We have many vibrant businesses and factories with vacant jobs being filled by our new neighbors who have recently moved to Springfield and made it their home. We all have a lot to be proud of, and I appreciate your servant leadership, peace and kindness for all of us. Very respectful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and city commissioners. Thank you for allowing us to speak this evening. Here we are, uh, on the eve of the Fourth of July, almost a hundred, two-hundred-and-fifty years, two-hundred-and-forty-nine years. The Declaration of Independence, which was written before the, there was a United States of America, before there were citizens of this nation, says it this way. "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, and that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." The words far exceeded the fatal flaws of the one who wrote those words and of those who signed that document. Still, we stand in this moment facing some ongoing questions about how or if we will live accordingly. In so many ways, we are working through these several crises which present these questions to us. Rather than wish them away, this is the opportunity to rededicate ourselves to claiming their truth for our times. And it happens as we wrestle with the workings on the local level in towns, townships, counties, where you and others make decisions which touch the day-to-day lives of citizens. It happens when those responsible for our nation's governance are held to account for their actions and how they steward our resources. It happens as we communicate with them, making our, and making our choices known on the ballot box or at sometimes it requires protest and resistance. It happens when we contend with the circumstances of immigrants and how or if they will be treated fairly and humanely. It happens as, in the not-too-distant past, the struggle for civil and human rights have come at great cost and pain, and even now are fragile. It is never complete. It calls each of us in each time and in each generation to make the claim and together to rise to that challenge.
Thank you, Wes. Appreciate it.
Hello, I've never done this before, and I'm very nervous. So, uh, my name is Saquille Long, and I am a proud middle school teacher here in Springfield, specifically on the South Side. I stand in front of children that are so full of potential, they are so full of life, um, they're very bright, and they are scared, and honestly, so am I. Sorry. Our classrooms are not just places of learning anymore, they're becoming safe spaces where these children are learning to survive. A lot of my children can handle a gun before they can even write a compound sentence for me. That's not normal, and that's not acceptable. Our community was given hope, real fun, hope, real funding to prevent violence and invest in community solutions and protect our babies. But just as quickly as it was awarded, it was taken away, frozen or canceled after budget revisions, no explanation, no community input, and now, no plan. How do I look my students in the eye, knowing their safety was in the budget but not in the final decision? We cannot let bureaucracy or miscommunication cost us lives. Our babies are not statistics, they are our future, and the city must fight for them, like their lives depend on it, because they do. I know that there's not a lot that you have control over when it comes to the budgeting, but you have control over something. And we just want to know what the plan is, keep our babies safe. Thank you.
Those are all the cards I have that have been filled out correctly. I could ask, uh, we have Director Wilson with us from the state of Ohio, and he has a few comments because he's with us. I could take the microphone.
Thank you, Mayor Rue, members of the commission. It is an honor to be before you again tonight. As you know, back in the fall, the governor put a team on the ground, uh, here to address, uh, the various issues, uh, that this community was, was having. Um, as part of our mission on the ground, we, as you saw from the governor, we try to stay focused on what the actual issues were, not get drawn into rhetoric or, or pulled off of really kind of focusing on what the struggles in this community were. And, uh, we did so. We, we looked at healthcare, we looked at schools, we looked at public safety, uh, we looked at rent and housing, uh, we, we brought in really kind of the entire administration members, uh, from the various departments across the administration to help the city and the county deal with, uh, the issues, uh, that were so pressing at the time. Uh, I just wanted to let you know, the governor wanted to let you know that as we approach the next thirty, sixty days of, uh, changes in, in policy, we're, we're beginning to look at what those issues may be again, and we're trying to anticipate, again, we're not gonna get pulled into rhetoric or pulled off of our focus. We're going to actually look at, try to determine what the real-world effects for this community are going to be. To that end, uh, we've already started discussions with the state health department, we've started discussions with Department of Job and Family Services and the Department of Children and Youth, again, just trying to anticipate what you may or may not see over the next thirty to sixty days. The governor wanted me to reiterate his dedication to you all, uh, and to the, the citizens of this community with respect to our resources and our dedication to, in helping you through, uh, whatever may come your way. We'll be back on the ground again more frequently than we have been over the last couple months, working with your police department, working with city manager, working with months, working with your police department, working with city manager, working with various stakeholders, businesses and nonprofits and different community groups in the community, again, seeking to identify what we think problems are going to be and trying to preemptively or proactively mitigate what those problems could possibly be. So I just wanted that the governor wanted me to come and again, just let you know that that's kind of where he stands and where we'll be. The other thing that I have for you too, is the governor wanted me to again, let you all know that the full weight of the Department of Public Safety is available if you need it to address violent crime issues. We have a great working relationship with your chief and we are willing to provide analysts, we're willing to provide extra resources. Whatever you need, the governor stands ready to leverage or move in as you work your way through the summer. And again, that spike in violence that comes a lot of times in our urban areas or our communities during the summertime. So governor wanted me to let you know that we stand ready to help however that's what I'm here for.
Absolutely. I say from the community, if you take a, simply a community that was in crisis, that was in a swirl, regardless of your politics, and to have a state governor, like state governor, spend the time in a community in his state or her state and spend the resources to make sure that community was safe and the community members were safe, Governor Dewine did a fantastic job. I appreciate that and I know the commission does as well for his attention to our community. So please convey that back to him for sure. And as far as resources to help curb gun violence and youth violence, yes, we'll let you work that out with the chief and the city manager on what that looks like. But whatever help we, that will help stop the violence, that would be great.
Stand ready to help.
Thank you. Okay, we have some answers to some of the questions. Are you ready? Okay, so Brian, there's a couple of things that he'll be able to answer. I've got some notes written on cards and I think maybe even from...
Yep, a couple of things and then I'll ask Chief King as well to speak to the item on arsons. The green streetlights on High Street that were brought up, those are owned and maintained by Ohio Edison. We don't see them hit any more frequently than any other streetlights, but as our service director indicated, they are a decorative streetlight, so they, the poll usually does not win in that and then the people drive off. We would have to work with Ohio Edison to know what those costs are because again, they own and operate those. As far as, there was several mentions of the gun violence grant or the youth gun violence grant, understanding that that was actually through OIC of Clark County and was not a grant of the city of Springfield itself and was a cut that came from the Department of Justice again, and I know Leslie Crew would be glad to speak to anybody about that specific grant and the item. As far as the $400,000, that was what money was drawn down before the grant was terminated and that was used to do a lot of data and research around the issue in the community and then we're starting the gun violence group led by Caleb Perkins, we're looking at ways to then take that and transpire that into some initiatives for youth specifically and what they were going to do. Power of Clean Future Ohio, I actually reached out after last meeting to Joe Florida and actually have a meeting with them this week, so we'll be talking with them this week. I just want to let citizens know that there are monthly crime stats that are posted to our website. It is calls for service that we receive, but those are posted on the website. And then Chief King, would you speak to the arson?
Thank you, Mayor, city manager, commissioners. Speak with the arson, comments that were made with regards to, I'm not sure where the data comes from, but we do not report any stats that associated with or cap. Nothing in the National Fire Administration or under our reporting system does that, but it's easy to do. But I would say that my, we had 74 arson cases started with Springfield Police Division in 2024. The reason why they're started as arson is that is the only charge available for a fire. A lot of times if we cannot find the occupant or the owner of a facility, a building or a vehicle that we can't confirm and have a conversation with, we immediately call for PD to initiate a report number, which is listed under arson. It doesn't mean that any arson happened, we are starting a documentation trail. So if the actual owner stated that their car had been stolen or their friend set it on fire, whatever that would be, that we can actually go back to that actual case. A lot of those cases close out, you have to go through and read in each one of them to determine which ones we have closed and which ones haven't, but it still has a number that's reported. But for example, out of the 74 cases that were listed for 2024 by Springfield Police Department, 28 of those were vehicle fires. One was a motorcycle. Five were trash fires where we had piles of rubble. One was articles of clothing from a domestic dispute where they had thrown them in the front yard and lit them on fire. Had a dumpster fire, we had seven detached garages or sheds, which is a total of 41 that we would label as miscellaneous. 32 were actual building fires that we requested these police reports. Those also included a deck that was on fire as well as an outside wall. Those are the total of 74 cases. It does not mean that we have suspects, it does not mean we've actually charged anyone with arson, but that is the only Ohio revised code that we can list to initiate a report. So that is section 2909.03 under the Ohio Revised Code, which states what is arson. It's a very lengthy section in the ORC, it covers many, many things. But for us, that is the only way for us to initiate the tracking of runs and calls that we may not be able to have an actual cause for the fire yet, and so we'll initially call for the police to start that. But to put that all into perspective of the 74 total police reports, in 2024, we had 84 building fires, 69 vehicle fires and 390 minor fires. So the totality of those numbers are very small and not all of those reports are actual arson cases. Actually, there's very few. Any other follow-up question, Mayor? City Manager?
Thank you for that information. Chief, are you able just to speak to an arrest and a conviction and difference in this sharing those stats? Maybe educate us a little bit more.
Good evening, Mayor Rue and Commission. Can you clarify, I guess, what you're asking me specifically?
I think there was a question about a statement that why don't we post arrests, not convictions for certain crimes?
Sure, so like the city manager explained when there was a question about, I'm sorry, I thought you were speaking about arsons initially when you asked me about that, so...
Okay, wait, I'm getting waved off. You know, Jimmy, I'm gonna just, you have like one sentence to add to clarify, okay? This is abnormal, but I asked you to do this, let's make sure. One sentence, please, make it quick.
I appreciate generosity.
Yeah, yeah.
Allow me. Were you talking about the fire or the...
Arrest, maybe you were about to say arrest and post the arrest.
Right. Yeah, I'll clarify exactly. She suggested creating a city ordinance
Okay.
that would monitor or keep track of arrests, not convictions
Okay.
of serial domestic violence.
Thank you, thank you. Can you speak to that, why we probably can't create an ordinance? That might be a problem.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah, please.
So...
I'm just trying to get some answers to be transparent for our crew.
Right, you want the names of the people that have been arrested?
Yes or no, just not?
Yeah, okay, so you want, okay, I got you, that's not it. Okay, yeah, okay.
All right, I think, I think I need a little more clarification here on which direction we're asking, on what we actually need and to clarify some things, I'm happy to provide additional information if I can sit down, I'm happy to sit down with Mr. Stewart and Ms. Donahue to understand what specific records requests or requests they have, so I do not provide misinformation.
I mean, I don't mean to put you on the spot. I get a little frustrated that there is an overall air for those that are citing so many statistics, like there's some sort of conspiracy that we're trying to hide crime or hide public, you're, we're not going to hear from you anymore, Jim, thank you. But there's, it just frustrates me, so I thought you could clear it up, but
Yes, sir.
But there is nothing in me, and I don't believe anybody on this stage, that wants to hide any crimes that are happening. We want people who have committed crimes to be fairly tried and convicted, fairly.
Sure, yeah.
And that's my opinion, so I probably, I probably asked you a two broad question...
No, I think we can, I think there's some things that we can discuss as far as what we post, just understanding, so we do post our calls for service for months, each month, excuse me. As far as arrests go with our database and our records management system, we're still obviously working through that, as you know, this is still an active process that we have with Clark County.
But we do want to get to this point, am I right?
Absolutely, absolutely, there's, we do have goals as far as our new records management system and being able to transition into that once Sheriff Clark is able to work through some of those nuances and some of those things that they, he had to kind of take on when he first came into office and he is diligently working on that as we know. And I know that that portion of that system will be able to track all that information in one system and keep it to where we can take a look at that. I'm not, you know, obviously, once we get into that...
Sorry, Chief, but this is also something, we've put continuous pressure on the sheriff and the county and the 911 dispatch center, this is something the city absolutely needs so we can have this fair and accurate reporting. I mean, this is true.
Absolutely.
It's just, we've had meetings about 911 dispatch and that this has to be done so we can have this information.
Yes, absolutely.
That's a fact as well.
They've been definitely working on that, we appreciate that and understanding the requests for arrests. I don't want to mix up, I know there are two different, two separate issues that they both discussed, but understanding we do still report our calls for service and on those stats, it's the top 10 calls for service for the month. But if you do recall, on the city's website, we also post the yearly calls for service and statistics that you can pull up for each month. We do that every year.
Also, so again, if you could just give me a head nod, so on the list that you want to have compiled, you want it to be like a special list for people, like a sex offender list? Yes or no? Okay, cool. So because my thought is, is that all arrests are public knowledge, right? The reason for the arrest, all of that is online. So you can get online and find out if someone was arrested, but it, stop me if I'm wrong, to aggregate and recategorize a group of people, I think we're really on dangerous and thin ice because that person's not been convicted of that crime. So if you want to see who got arrested and for what, that information is already listed in public.
So the, and we, the city manager said, thank you, Chief, I appreciate you coming up and trying to clarify my brain.
And I can, and I can follow up, I guess, to the arrest portion of it. I think I do understand in kind of differentiating the two issues or the two questions that were brought up for arrests and I think, and for juvenile arrests, I understand what Ms. Donahue was asking about, when you're talking about sex offender registries and juvenile information that's put out, because there are some differences with juvenile arrests and adult arrests in certain cases. So I think I do understand what they're speaking on, I'm happy to have further conversation about that. And as far as the statistics and the data, as far as the request of arrests, obviously that's something we have to continue to look at for us to be able to post, but, but again, we want to make sure that we are providing that information to the community and posting that on our website when we have it available.
And the manager's also said before that you, you get this concern as a citizen of these stats or this crime or these fires happening in our community, you do not have to wait until the commission meeting to get an answer. I know that a phone call could be made and a meeting can be had, that we've already met with you all over different concerns and we would meet with anybody and I will meet with you, sir. Maybe not Fourth of July week, but I'll meet with you, okay? There's only a couple of days left of this week. But what I'm saying is we'll meet with you, we'll talk about these things and we'll try to get the best information and the most vulnerable and what we can share to you. And I have heard other city leaders, not just commissioners, but staff members that have had meetings and want to talk about these things. We want clarity out there and we do want to, we are vulnerable and we do want to make sure you're getting the right information. We don't have to agree, but you will get the information that can be legally shared. Is that fair?
Yes, sir. And if you don't mind me just commenting a little bit further from, especially from what our community endured on Saturday night and some of the things that had happened there, obviously very traumatic, understanding questions that come from the commissioners and from folks who speak. I just want to reiterate that from us as a police department, we know that there were several folks who were willing to come forward and help us work through this incident on Saturday night. Not an easy thing to do, very fearful, understandably so, but I do want to reiterate that it is important and I will continue to ask our community to work with us, excuse me, as they have already. And just, just want to reiterate how important that is because there are folks and folks in that neighborhood and in this community who do genuinely care and want to make things better and safer and they do want to work with us. So they have come forward and we are beyond grateful for that because we know that is not easy.
And I'll just add that as a plug, in our next meeting, Chief Elliott and Sheriff Chris Clark will be doing a work session to talk about collaboration and cooperation between the two departments on the work that they're doing to help curtail the violence in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
David, if you stay after the meeting, we can exchange information so we can set that meeting up in the future. Okay, are there comments from commissioners and answers to questions? Commissioner Deckert? He's going to, he'd like to after we're all done with comments, I asked, thank you.
I have a few different things that I want to comment on. First of all, I commend, where do you want? I commend the people that came out and attended the gun violence march that was, that was here. I attempted to come and I was unable to change my schedule to come, but I do commend you and recognize the folks that did come. June was Gun Violence Awareness Month and so I definitely, especially with the situations we've had recently in the community, I have reached out to, again, Dion Green with the Fudge Foundation, who does a lot of work in this community surrounding youth gun violence and I wanted him to share a little bit of information because we always talk about kind of this surface stuff, but we don't really get down to what is the root cause of the youth gun violence. And for the police, I mean, I talk to police officers all the time, they would love to have some solutions so that they're not rolling up on situations like that. They don't, they don't want a community like that too, so I commend them for their work as well. But getting back to the information that Dion sent, he, he pointed out, of course, Springfield's violent crime rate is higher than Ohio's average. Over 50% of those crimes involve firearms. Youth aged 18 to 24-year-olds are the most involved, especially in neighborhoods impacted by high poverty rate and trauma. Clark County's poverty rate is 16% and we know that poverty and violence are tightly linked. Youth growing up in these environments face not only economic hardship, but also community trauma, limited mental health resources and few safe spaces. Black youth especially, males, 15 to 34, face disproportionate gun violence. There are 30 times, they are 30 times more likely to die by gun homicide than their white peers in Ohio. That's not just a statistic, it's a call to action.
Can I, can I ask you, I'd like for us to make sure that we ponder, because I had someone say to me one time, well, if it's always the black males that are committing the crimes, well then, well then, that is what it is. So I want to make sure that when we say and we quote data like that, that we understand that it is not just poverty, it's systemic racism and that complex trauma that also impacts everything that Tracy is saying. It's not just because they're black males and old, they're inherently more prone to be violent. No, it is because of systemic racism coupled with that poverty. So thank you, Tracy, for getting to the root. I just wanted to make sure, because when we hear that, we just automatically want to, to me, oftentimes I see people say, well, oh, there it goes again, there goes those black kids again, those black males always doing it. No, we have to understand, as you just said, the root cause. Thank you for bringing up those statistics.
Welcome. I want to finish out. Um, so the Fudge Foundation, again, doing work in our community, they're already working in high-risk neighborhoods with mentorship, trauma-informed care, healing circles, and community outreach. I also, when I went to the juvenile courts and over there and toured that area, uh, Dion was there and talking to young people about youth gun violence. Um, they have partnered with schools, organizations, and families to create safer, more supportive environments. Um, it says our work targets are the very age group, most risk, at-risk young people between 14 and 24. Then moving on to the next thing, um, our police. National Night Out, I don't know, how many years have we had National Night Out? I don't know if we can even call that out, but National Night Out, uh, is held by the Police Department and community partners. It is going to be, uh, Tuesday, August 5th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. in Veterans Park. It is an annual community building campaign to promote police-community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie. I've been to this, I see all the organizations that support this and the partnership they provide. Again, when we talk about there's nothing to do in Springfield and that we're not doing anything for youth, we are, we are. If we had the magic wand to fix this, I know we all would do it. Okay? So that's National Night Out coming up. Um, is there a place, this will be on the city's social media or?
Yes, we usually put it out on the city's website, city's social media channels, um, so it will be out there and.
Okay.
Special thanks to our CRT, our Community Response Team, who does a great job in then creating partnership with our other agencies, uh, throughout Clark County.
Adding, going on to our website as well, as we were talking about the, the transit system, um, we did have that meeting earlier with the community that I attended, and Jason By, um, kind of led the way throughout that, uh, discussion. Um, he was able to send me, I asked for the survey that was taken by the citizens, and it, it's actually on the website. It, I believe it's still on there, he was able to send me the link. So you can go on there and look at that. Uh, again, that's in regards to the transit system. Um, and then into some just lighter things. So we have the fireworks coming up, and that is Thursday, right?
Yes, Thursday, July 3rd. Um, they will be shot from, um, Ferncliff Cemetery again, so really the entire downtown, uh, is a great viewing area. There is a map on the Clark County Park District's website, uh, that kind of shows the best areas to view those fireworks. Uh, I believe there is a band in Veterans Park this year, starting at 8:00, and then the fireworks will, you know, proceed once it's dark enough to make sure we could see them.
Great. We also have the farmer's market happening every Saturday right here at the Heritage Center. I believe it's 9:00 to 12:30. There's music, there's shopping, there's just good community event to, to hang out down here. I love a Saturday morning during the summer in downtown Springfield. And then one last thing, just to highlight the Springfield Arts Council work they're doing over there, thank you to them, uh, their board, everyone that supports the, um, the Summer Arts Festival. I believe we have a couple of weeks left, I think the last day is, uh, next weekend, I believe, like they're wrapping up with like Taylor Swift and a Tom Petty, uh, tribute. So, again, encouraging you to go out, that's a free show. We're really lucky to have them and the work that they do. Um, I think that's it, I think I had it long enough, thank you.
I do want to just add, just piggybacking off what Tracy was saying, in the back of your Discover Parks magazine, there is additional information about, um, your, the transit that is coming. Uh, there's a half a page there that's listed there, and again, this is, um, everyone gets this, so just gives you some more information in the back of this booklet as well.
We're not taking any more comments, we're not taking any more comments, sir. And then, thank you. Um, and then John, I knew you had a lot of questions about the bus, there, because there's an agenda item tonight, we're actually going to discuss that again in greater detail. Thank you. Okay, Dr. Estrop has a presentation on current federal and state funding cuts.
And actually, I'm going to ask Brian that we changed this slide so it reflects, uh, current federal and state funding reductions and increases, because in the budget process, there's been some winners and losers, and we need to understand how those decisions affect not only Springfield, but Clark County. So if we can go to the chart, please? Uh, the, uh, dollars lost to date, total 4,244,434.08. Uh, just to briefly review, and you'll see this reflected in the chart, the combined, uh, Clark County Combined Health District lost, uh, a grant totaling 2.7 million, um, that will impact Clark County on, uh, to the extent of 134,500 citizen and youth. Uh, they've also laid off some staff. Second Harvest lost 210,000 in food. That affects about 21,000 people in terms of three weeks of food, as well as some farmer. As, uh, Mr. Heck mentioned, OIC, on behalf of a number of partners, um, lost a federal grant, uh, totaling, uh, 1.2 million and, and some, uh, uh, some additional dollars, 1.235, uh, youth gun violence, and, um, the impact is obvious. We have two new ones, however, today. Um, McKinley Hall reported to us a loss of a grant from the federal government of $59,980 that was to be used for substance use treatment program. Uh, this specifically served 800 or more individuals in Clark County and impacted 40 positions at McKinley Hall. In addition, McKinley Hall reported that one of the decisions around the new state budget that affected the State Department of Youth Services, they lost $10,000 grant from the state for a program that was entitled Talk They Listen Program, um, that talked about prevention services as well as health and safety. We will continue to monitor this. If you've been following the news at all, you know that the governor signed off on the budget, but he has the power to make some line item vetos. So he can go in and say, "I like this, that's fine, I don't care for this line," and line it out. It then goes back to the House and Senate at the state level, and they can, what is called override the veto with an extraordinarily high majority. Federal budget bill has made its way through the Senate, as Logan responded earlier, they now have to put the House and Senate bills together in a conference committee, work out any differences, and then that would be sent to President Trump. So that's where we stand. Um, I want to express my appreciation to all the staff, particularly, uh, Ava Wills, our intern, who's putting this together. I think over the next couple of weeks, as this all unwinds in front of us from the state and federal perspective, we're going to be very busy and have a lot to report to you. Thank you.
And I'll just add real quick that, so SpringfieldOhio.gov on the homepage, there is a page, I'll make that update as Commissioner Estrop about reductions and increases, uh, but you can see each of the programs, uh, in the dollar amount and the total dollar amount on our website. I think everything, uh, had froze up because it was sitting there for a while, and so thank you, Chris Moore, for running over there and, and fixing that, but it is on our website, and I'll make those updates.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Estrop, thanks for going in detail about these, uh, cut and how they affect our community. Okay, we'll go on with first readings, we'll continue with our legislative, uh, portion, and, uh, ask the, uh, court to go ahead and begin with first readings.
Amending Ordinance 91-90 passed March 12, 1991, and commonly known as the Codified Ordinances of the City of Springfield, Ohio, by the enactment of Chapter 158 under the Administrative Code entitled Board of Zoning Appeals. Authorizing the city manager to enter into Amendment Number One to the contract with Max Solve Environmental and Safety Consultants for environmental consulting services, to amend the scope of services and increase the contract by $162,900 for a total amount not to exceed $262,900 for the initial contract year. Confirming and approving an additional expenditure for temporary staffing services with express employment professionals for an amount not to exceed $5,250, for a total amount not to exceed $82,500 for services to be provided through June 30, 2025. Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Loyst North America of Missouri Incorporated for the purchase of Quicklime for the period of one year with an option to renew for two additional one-year periods for an amount not to exceed $1,552,200 for the initial one-year period. Authorizing the city manager to enter into a development incentive agreement, non-residential development, to provide sewer services to real property outside the city limits located at 2404 Troy Road. Authorizing the city manager to submit an application for financial assistance and accept a grant from the state of Ohio, Ohio Public Works Commission, to obtain funding in the amount up to $195,162 for the CLA 40, 14.14, PID number 117962, and authorizing the city manager, law director, finance director, and city engineer to do all things they consider necessary for the submission of the application for financial assistance and the acceptance of the grant. Authorizing the city manager to submit an application for financial assistance and accept a grant from the state of Ohio, Ohio Public Works Commission, to obtain funding in an amount up to $854,027 for the CLA Springfield Miscellaneous Resurfacing Fiscal Year 27, PID number 118647, and authorizing the city manager, law director, finance director, and city manager to do all things they consider necessary for the submission of the application for financial assistance and the acceptance of the grant.
Thank you. I'm going to ask the city manager to, uh, go into some detail about our first readings for clarity.
Yeah, uh, so commissioners, I know at the last meeting, one of the items or one of the things asked was about, uh, when there's dollar amounts, explaining, uh, where those dollars are coming from. So, 020-25, this is our environmental consultant that works with us on various properties throughout the city, performing Phase 1 and Phase 2 environmental assessments. Uh, you see the increase with Max Solve Environmental and Safety Consultants, specifically this is for, uh, those environmental assessments for properties on Sunset, uh, Dibbert, and then Kenton and Burt, um, and this is paid for through the Brownfield Remediation Program at the state of Ohio. So these funds come from the state of Ohio. Uh, 175-25, which was with express employment professionals, uh, so as you know, uh, we made the official transition effective today with, uh, Rita, uh, for our income tax collections. Uh, during the period of time of that transition, as employees, um, uh, were able to find other jobs, um, in, in other communities and so forth, that we had to backfill, uh, until this date with Rita, and so we were able to work with this express employment, uh, a local group to bring on some temporary services. These were paid for out of general fund dollars. Uh, the next one, 176-25, uh, which is, uh, purchasing, um, Quicklime, uh, for the water treatment plant process, uh, which softens the water. Um, this is paid for out of the, the water fund, um, as it is used to, again, soften the water, and this contract specifically is down 3.7%. And then the last two items, 178-25, uh, that is, again, state dollars that we are seeking to obtain. Um, this would be for the pavement of Main from Green Mount to Burnett. And then the next one, 179-25, uh, again, is paving and OPW C funds would be leveraging or bringing back state dollars to our community, uh, to help with the Springfield Miscellaneous resurfing, uh, resurfacing projects, uh, fiscal year 27, which is state fiscal year, which actually starts July 1 of '26, uh, but this is for Main Street, Spring to Green Mount, and Selma from Spring Street to the Corporation Line.
Excellent, thank you. Are there other comments from commissioners on first readings only?
Yes. Um, Brian or Chris, can you, um, share with us again, how many roads are we trying to pave a year, like the goals to get these done?
Yeah, so, uh, Neighborhood Streets Program, so those are our residential streets that we cannot, um, you know, it struggles to get state or federal funds because they're not on that, uh, federal aid system. Um, we have paved over 100, uh, of those neighborhood streets since the passage of our levy, uh, beginning in 2018, um, and we're going to keep knocking out as many as we can. Um, we know we went not, over nine years without a Neighborhood Streets Program, and so we know we're not going to be able to, uh, to catch up overnight, uh, but we are working, uh, our crews, uh, we supplement it with in-house paving, uh, with our Neighborhood Streets Program. We've spent well over $2 million, which was what our commitment was on Neighborhood Streets. And then, again, we continue to leverage additional dollars back to the community, both state and federal, so that we can pave additional roadways in our community.
You know that, um, when I was elected and I got to go around and see the different facilities with Chris, one of the things that he said that really stuck out to me that I just, I never thought about, is like, how many times does Amazon run up and down your street, and how often? What kind of damage is that doing to our streets? I mean, it's just things like that, UPS, all the things that we have shipped because we don't have, we have so much online shopping now, right? Um, so, it was just something to consider that was kind of eye-opening for, for me, and I just want to share that out with folks.
Any comments on first readings from commissioners? We'll continue with second readings. Uh, excuse me, is there any comments from the audience on first readings only? Now, on first readings only, go ahead, Baron. No, sir, we're up to the podium, thank you, sir.
Is it available on the city's website, the streets that they're planning, neighborhoods that are planning on improving? Like Tracy said, I, I live on an entrance to the, to the Oak Press Subs and our, that, that one block is just poor up. I'm just curious, when the, when it's in the budget, when they plan on, you know, doing that? I've called several times about the pothole. I mean, it's dangerous at this, and the overgrowth. It's basically a one-lane road going back out of there, and I'm just, uh, counting the minute till someone has a terrible accident in front of my house.
We'll make note of the pothole that you mentioned, um, and have one of our crew, yeah, potholes that our crews will look at. Um, yes, I believe we do have, uh, a map on our website that shows the streets that we've paved, and, you know, we really work out two to three years ahead, uh, because again, we want to, um, protect our investment, so we're oftentimes working to repair the utilities, the underground infrastructure before we can go in, so it's usually a two to three-year process, um, and so we try to plan, uh, plan ahead. But I do believe there's a map, uh, that gets updated on our website, um, I will get the link and send that directly to you.
Thank you. Thank you. Just state your name for the record.
Yes, I'm Darcy Bisker. I am a heritage citizen, but also a recent resident as of last week.
Thank you.
I just heard Ms. Jeffries mention 4404 Troy Road, and I'm very curious about why it was mentioned. I'm sorry I didn't catch it, I guess I could read it in the minutes, but I wonder if other people might want to know too. Why was 4404 Troy Road mentioned?
So this is specifically, uh, properties that are outside of the city limits that have city utilities, uh, so in this case, it's a sewer service, um, so this property had previous sewer service, so they are not contiguous to the city, so they can't annex into the city. Um, there is a transfer of ownership, and so we reestablished that same development incentive agreement that provides sewer services to that property outside of the city limits.
Okay, sorry for that, I just.
Thank you.
Totally. totally wanted to know that context.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay, we'll continue with second readings.
Amending the zoning map of Springfield, Ohio by rezoning 0.146 acres at 1109 Kenton Street, Springfield, Ohio, from CC2 Community Commercial District to our M12 Low Density Multi-Family Residence District.
Oh, move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Other comments from commissioners, from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Amending the zoning map of Springfield, Ohio by rezoning 0.21 acres at 1351 to 1550, excuse me, 1353 South Limestone Street, Springfield, Ohio, from our M12 Low Density Multi-Family District, Residence District, to C into Neighborhood Commercial District.
Oh, move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Other comments from commissioners, from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Authorizing the exercise of the city's option to renew the contract with Southern Ionics Incorporated for the purchase of liquid sodium bisulfite for use by the city's wastewater treatment plant for an amount not to exceed $75,200.
Oh, move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Other comments from commissioners? Dr. Estrop?
Um, this is a good example as any. The money for this is not coming out of our general fund budget. Is that correct?
That is correct. This is for the wastewater treatment plant, so it would come out of our sewer account.
Comes out of the sewer fund, which is a whole different fund.
Yes.
And for those who are used to dealing with a checkbook and maybe a savings account, fund accounting is required of all government entities. So we have the general fund, which is the big pot of money. But then we can have, in this case, the sewer fund, the water fund, and other funds in terms of specific parts of business. So when you hear the discussion about the general fund is in trouble, a different funding source than what's paying for these chemicals to be used in the wastewater treatment plant.
Thank you, Dr. Estrop. Other comments from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Authorizing the renewal of the services agreement with Flock Group Incorporated to provide services related to the automatic license plate reader camera system for an amount not to exceed $114,000.
Oh, moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Other comments from commissioners, from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into Amendment B to the engineering services agreement with Black and Veatch Corporation for the Erie Express Pump Station Pre-Treatment Facility project to increase the agreement in an amount not to exceed $325,294 for a total agreement amount not to exceed $1,223,307.
Oh, move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Other comments from commissioners? Dr. Estrop?
Where does this funding come from?
Again, this project is part of our wastewater and stormwater system, and so specifically out of our sewer revenue fund to help with the debt financing.
And the money coming into the sewer revenue fund is money we collect from people who use our sewer system or get water from us.
Yes, it is an enterprise fund, and so for the services that they receive, water, sewer, stormwater.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into Agreement Number Three to the Agreement for Consulting Engineering Services, Concrete Inspection, Technical Specification Preparation, and Construction Phase Services with Burgess and Niple Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $63,036 for a total contract amount not to exceed $354,596, and confirming and approving related expenditures incurred from April 1, 2022.
Oh, move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Other comments from commissioners, from the audience?
I just wanted to know where the money came.
Yes, this is a project associated with the water treatment plant, so it would come from the water fund.
Okay. Thank you.
Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement for construction services with Berger Construction Services LLC for the Snyder Park Weight Station Roof Replacement and Foundation Repairs for an amount not to exceed $119,975.
Oh, moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Other comments from commissioners?
Yes, just a, just a quick comment. I want to thank them for picking up this project. It'll be nice to see that finally completed in Snyder Park, so kudos to them.
And I'll just add Brad and Leanne, their work on trying to get this project, find somebody that would take this size of a project on and restore this building in our park system.
Comments from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Consent to the resurfacing of US 40 from Green Mount Avenue to Burnett Road located in the city of Springfield by the Ohio Department of Transportation, providing for the maintenance of the right-of-way and authorizing the city manager to enter into agreement with the Director of Transportation of the State of Ohio necessary to complete the project.
Oh, move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Other comments from commissioners? Dr. Estrop?
The reason the state is paying for this is because this is a state route, and they simply ask our approval, since it's within the city, to work on the state route. Am I correct?
That is correct. This is part of their urban repaving program, though, so there is a piece. The total match for this project is a little over $100,000, I believe, Chris, that will come from local dollars. But again, leveraging a larger state project with, with smaller local dollars.
Very good. Thank you.
Comments from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a community housing development organization agreement with Neighborhood Housing Partnership of Greater Springfield Incorporated in connection with the general operation of affordable housing development activities for an amount not to exceed $21,000, and confirming and approving related expenditures incurred from July 1, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Other comments from commissioners? Dr. Estrop?
A question. In this contract, if we do not receive these federal funds, is the contract then declared null and void?
Specifically for this one, I do believe this is part of our current program year, which we did receive funds for as NHP serves as that chodo. But we have been incorporating in all of our most recent contracts that it is contingent on actually receiving the funds, if it's tied to a federal or state program that may or may not exist.
Seems like a very prudent thing to do. Thank you.
Other comments from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Authorizing the purchase of one SCBA compressor from Municipal Emergency Services Incorporated for an amount not to exceed $104,703 through Sourcewell pursuant to the Sourcewell Contract Purchasing Cooperative Program in accordance with the provisions of Section 9.48 of the Ohio Revised Code.
Oh, move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Other comments from commissioners? Dr. Estrop?
As I recall, this compressor is used by the Fire Division.
Yes, this is what helps fill our air tanks. So our members utilize the air tanks on their back for oxygen, and this was what helps fill those air tanks.
Very good. Thank you.
Other comments from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Granting to River North Transit LLC the authority, right, and privilege to establish, maintain, and operate a public transportation system in the city of Springfield, Ohio for the transportation for hire of passengers only for five years with an option to renew for two additional five-year periods, fixing the terms and conditions of such grant and providing for the city's participation in the cost of such operation.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I would like Brian Heck and Jason Vai to talk in detail about this for clarity for the, and even repeating from the last meeting.
Yeah, so I'll start, and then I'll ask Deputy Director, Vai can speak to this as well. This is for a contract for the operation of our public transportation system. And so we have provided public transportation for a long time in the city of Springfield, and it became apparent several years ago that we needed to look for a, the most efficient, effective, and financially feasible and financially sustainable system for our community. Approximately 80% of the funding for this comes from the federal government through FTA. And usually, they treat systems very cookie-cutter approach, where they expect a smaller community like Springfield to have a transit operation or transport, public transportation system like some of the larger cities like Columbus, Cleveland, Cincinnati, just to name a few in Ohio. And it's become apparent over the years that that model, that cookie-cutter approach, does not work for all communities, especially communities our size. And so we have seen a transition in service model in communities like Springfield all across the country to a more micro-transit model. And again, this micro-transit model is meeting the needs of the community while also creating an efficient, effective, and financially sustainable system. Because we are at that crossroads of, again, this is a service that we would like to continue to provide to our residents, but the current model, the current system as it operates, is not financially sustainable long term. This became apparent just as recent as November. The existing operator of the system had approached us and was this close to submitting their 90-day contract out. And we would have fallen into a position where we would not have been able to have an operator to offer public transportation in our community. And so, again, this has been an ongoing effort by our staff and our partners to look for ways to continue to provide this vital service. What we see is a vital service in our community in an efficient, effective, and again, financial, sustainable, and feasible model. And so with that, I'd like, if Jason can speak a little bit to the specifics about the current system and then, and where we're moving to, and how we believe this will deliver that more efficient, effective, and financially sustainable system and service.
Good evening, and thank you for your continued important questions as far as the transition of the service and how we plan to move forward. Thought at the risk of being redundant, it would be prudent to review the process that got us here today. So in 2021, a consultant was retained by the Clark County TCC. If you're not familiar, TCC is the Transportation Coordinating Committee, who is our metropolitan planning organization in charge of evaluating the system and efficiencies. That consultant conducted public participation meetings, gathered data, reviewed ridership data, efficiency data, and ultimately completed a report over a two-year period, which was completed in late 2022, with recommendations coming in early 2023. A couple of the notable factors in the decision-making process of his report included the existing service cost and how that varies depending on capital investment, capital investments. As Mr. Heck mentioned, some of those costs can vary, but they average between $2.5 to $3 million a year. 80% of that funding comes from the federal government. In recent years, the city contribution cost has nearly doubled from approximately $200,000 a year to nearly $400,000 a year. They also considered efficiency. In 2014, the service conducted 280,000 rides at a program cost of $6.83 per ride. By 2023, those numbers had dropped significantly, over, over double to 120,000 rides, with that cost surging to over $18 per ride. We also reviewed equipment. Our existing bus fleet is aging, and many of them need replaced. The cost to replace a bus similar to what we have now is approximately $500,000. Those buses hold an average of 25 passengers, run on diesel fuel, and get five to six miles per gallon. With an existing ridership that averages less than five passengers per ride, that didn't seem efficient going forward. Even more so, those fixed routes continue to ride, even if, continue to run, even when the buses are empty. As far as our total rider population, there are truly only 400 to 500 people who use the service, which is less than half a percent of our total population. So as we prepared for those changes, we continued seeking community involvement that included updated coverage with our partners at the local news stations, our city website, and our social media. In the fall of '23, 2023, we held a booth at Culture Fest, and then since that time, have had an open survey with frequently asked questions on our website. Following up with that, to ensure policy compliance, we have, we have standing meetings with the FDA, which are nearly monthly. We also had a separate, let's call it a triennial review, which is where the FDA has an independent contractor come in and evaluate our service to ensure compliance with policy. Following that, we also had our internal legal team review the steps we've taken and the RFP requirements we were going to be seeking in the service chain. So in 2024, in the spring, we prepared an RFP, which is a request for proposals, that was processed through our finance procurement team, which is something that occurs in this situation and is required by federal regulations after these types of changes. For that first bidding process, we had no bidders. We did have several interested parties. So after the process was over, we followed up with them to, to understand their concerns, and really, we just wanted to hear from them why they did not bid, and what we need to do in the future to make this an attractive service. We reviewed all that information and adjusted our RFP where appropriate. In the winter of 2024, in December, we re-released that bid. We did receive bids from three qualified vendors, and our staff, internal and external transit team evaluated those proposals and selected Via Transportation as our next vendor, as they were the most affordable, efficient, and sustainable op. From there, we moved into a contract negotiation phase and service design simultaneously. During that time, we reviewed, as we continued contract negotiations, we also reviewed the existing updated service data and how riders use, utilize it, with primary goals of supporting our existing riders to ensure we continue to have the type of rides available to meet their needs. But we also wanted to increase efficiency, support the workforce need, and reduce some environmental concern. We also considered cost. The cost of the new service essentially mirrors the cost of the existing service for the rider. So we have a full-rate cost, reduced rate cost for folks who qualify. We're going to continue to offer bulk purchasing for 10-ride, 30-day passes, and this will include continuing paratransit service to support riders of all abilities and mobility needs. As the city aligns our priorities to be good stewards of given fiscal, our fiscal restraints, we have to continuously evaluate our core services that we can provide to the community. Transit is not required. However, it is a priority that the city has established as a service to provide the community. I also just want to note here, too, that this is an operational change with the goals of keeping the system feasible by stabilizing costs, viable for future growth, and improving efficiency to meet evolving community needs. and improving efficiency to meet evolving community needs. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thanks, Jason. I did want to clarify one thing, just, and I do it all the time. We speak in acronyms. I did it earlier, but FTA, Federal Transit Administration Funds is what we're referring to. The eighty percent approximate funds that come from the federal government are through FTA, again, the Federal Transit Administration.
So this decision is an effort for the city of Springfield to continue to, to provide this service. We want to provide this service, and this is the best way that the staff has recommended that we can continue to provide the service. Is that, that's what we're presenting today, basically?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
Jason, just for point of clarification. So what you said was, the cost of a ride, as it stands right now, is $6?
No, I'm sorry. So that was the
So it's $1.
Cost of the ride for the program
Sure.
escalated from six to $18.
Sure.
But the service cost for the rider is
Still $1.
Remains the same.
So it went from $6 full cost to $18 full cost, but the price?
Our prices have not changed.
Have not changed for the rider. So now, will, again, will we be continuing to pay such a large discrepancy if we move to this model?
So we believe that moving in this model will provide increased efficiency, which will offset those, those jumping costs that we've seen previously.
Sure, sure. So when we could say for real, for real, that we were paying like $17 of somebody's ride, and, and now we're gonna bring it back to where it's, it's still feasible for us to be able to continue to contribute.
Right, that, that is the goal, to bring it down and keep it, you know, viable for the long term. I do, I do want to clarify that, so the existing service on the fixed route system, you're paying full fare, cost of $1 for each leg of that ride. Most folk who have to travel, you know, beyond the service area of their route, connect to a second route, and therefore that would be $2 each way. And that's how we came up with the, the service fee of $2 each way for the existing ride. Folks who qualify for discounts, that'll continue. We are gonna institute a process to ensure that that seamlessly moves forward as we change the service.
So they would not have to change buses or vehicles to get from point A to point B in this new system?
Right, that is correct. It's, it's a point-to-point service.
If it's, okay, it's a point-to-point service. So where it may have taken two, a second stop or a stop in the past, it would not, there would not be that stop. So it may take, cost $2 to get from point A to point B, but it would have been the same cost in the past. Is that right?
It is with, I'd say, increased efficiency with reduction of the amount of time you'd wait for the service, and then the amount of time it takes you to move from point A.
Sure. But if I want to travel outside of my quadrant, that still is gonna make me have basically a car change, or is that?
No, there'll be no car change. Anywhere, any point from the city to the city, any point will be $2 each way.
So essentially, it would be the same price, but you're not changing buses. So it's more efficient and safer for you.
Okay. And it's practically, and I, I hope everyone heard the way I said that, it's like an Uber or Lyft, so to speak, type of model.
So it, it is similar in the, in that you are picked up at a, you know, a designated point, depending upon where you're located. And what, what is a little bit different is along the way, very similar to public transportation now, depending on other riders, if they're going your way, you may collect them along the way. So it is still shared rides.
Okay, so exactly like, so if you wanted to share your ride within the Uber app, you can, you can do that. Okay, cool.
Yeah.
Sweet.
Commissioner Tackett.
But the average ridership we found was, what, 4.?
Our average ridership as it exists is approximately, you know, per, per ride is 4.8 passenger.
Okay, and then the new fleet of vehicles will carry how many folk?
They can take up to six passengers per ride. You know, certainly that'll depend upon where the vehicle is going at that time. If there's nobody else in line that's going in the same direction as you are, you might ride alone. If there are other folk along the way, they will, they will get picked up.
And we're looking at how many vehicles coming online?
Approximately sixteen.
Okay, and then this was communicated out over years, right? The survey was created and the citizens were asked in '22?
Going back, the consultant's work began in 2021.
Twenty-one, okay.
In 2021.
And then, again, the report is up on the website. We also had work sessions. If folks want to go back and look at those, we had work sessions, you can find on our YouTube channel, June 21st, 2022, and April 22nd, 2025. The, the most recent one in April had Via there and explaining who they are and their plans. It was also shared in our local newspaper. It was shared on social media and at the community development meetings that Logan spoke to earlier, where we were identifying transportation as an issue that our city wants to work on. And then, am I understanding correctly, trans dev was ready to give us a 90-day, we're out?
In November of 2024, they approached us and, and they were looking to invoke the clause in their contract, which would have been a 90-day termination.
And we're not required to provide this service, but want to
That is correct.
Provide it for the citizens. There's environmental benefits. We just talked about the roads and running the roads back and forth. So there's infrastructure benefits. We talked about the average ridership. It'll match the fleet. The accessibility for veterans, folks with disabilities, bikes and scooters. So we, we had this meeting prior to this meeting, where folks brought in some of their concerns and barriers we may see, or they may see, right? So can you speak to some of that, that they brought up, the, the veterans, the disabilities, and the bikes and scooters?
Right, absolutely. So the veterans, among many other groups in our, in our community, are able to buy bulk passes to help support veterans and their, and their transit needs. So that will continue, as well as all of the different ways that we can, we support riders right now. You know, if they have mobility concerns, if they're in a wheelchair, or in a scooter, or if they arrive to the bus by bicycle, we're gonna continue to support them and be able to transport all those different mobility aids wherever they're going.
Thank you. Thank you for hosting the meeting earlier. I'm happy to have met all the citizens that I had an opportunity to meet with. And if this moves forward now, I keep my promise, if you see barriers or things that maybe we can help address and bridge some gaps, right? I'm here. I'll jump in the car, I'll ride the bus, whatever's happening, okay? So whatever you need, you can reach out to me. I'm ttacket@springfieldohio.gov. Okay, thank you.
I, I just want to say that, I, I'm sorry. I, I just want to, thanks a lot, King, say that I used to ride the bus with my aunt when I was a kid here in Springfield, and I never could figure out how to make it happen. And then I went away to college, and I lived in Toledo, and I tried to ride the bus there. Then I lived in Atlanta, tried to ride the bus there. And it's always been this thing that I cannot figure out, like the transfers from here to there, hey, Miss Lester, and all of the things, you know what I'm saying? Like, I cannot wrap my brain around, like, why did it take me a full day to get down the street, and you know, to the mall? Like, I can't do it. This sounds so much less complex now, that I think we'll see that ridership continue to increase. If we do see that increase, are we gonna be able to, to sustain and be able to meet that demand if we do see that? What's our plan on that?
Sure. One of the most beneficial things about Via Transportation is their software. So we're gonna have continuous data analysis, and we're gonna be able to make adjustments as necessary, you know, even through the week, to make sure that we meet all those needs and ensure we have enough rides to support all the new riders as well.
Thank you.
I make sure that I have captured the big picture here. Our cost of providing public transportation has gone up considerably, even when, in fact, the city has doubled its support of public transportation. As I recall, you said from 200 to 400,000, the city is now putting behind public transportation. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So clearly, our costs have gone up. We were spending six cents, or $6 per passenger. We're now spending $18 per passenger.
Yes.
Costs are up. The number of people riding the bus has come down. That's why the expenses, when you keep the buses running in a similar schedule, your expenses will go up. So as I see this, this is pretty straightforward proposition. If we want to have public transportation in the city of Springfield, then we're gonna have to change and come up with a new system, because the current system is gonna crash and burn financially, just like some airlines did before, when they did not change and improve. Remember Pan Am? Pan Am was a hit of the world. It's no longer in business. Frankly, I'm concerned about the eighty percent also. Now it's yet to be seen what they're going to do with that in the federal budget. Under this new plan, absent that federal report, could we operate a public transportation system by ourselves?
No.
What I thought. So this is really, put it all on the line.
And sir, just to add
We, we think we can operate a system that will be efficient, effective, and financially sustainable if federal support continues. We cannot do it with the current system, even with the federal support. So I will be supporting this. I think it's a move we absolutely must make, and something that will benefit our community significantly in terms of people's ability to get around this community and actually get to and from work. So I think this is a, this is an absolute must-pass ordinance. Thank you.
Do you have something else while he was talking?
I was just gonna say that in consideration of the federal budget, there has been no indication that's gonna change. However, we do have provisions in the contract should that become a reality.
Yes, Jason, thanks for all your work on this. Really appreciate everything you've done. I just have one kind of outside-the-box question. Obviously, we talk a lot, and more so recently, about the youth in the community. Just wondering, do you ever think it would be a possibility that this company, as ridership grows, could have a partnership with the city schools at some point, like helping kids get to extracurricular activities, or anything like that?
Yes, I, I do believe so. There is opportunity right now, even with extracurricular activities. I, I talked to the schools last year, and they had bus transportation to the events, but not all the time did they have drivers to support bringing kids back afterward. So that, there is opportunity there to support the existing student riders, but also to expand that service.
And we could always expand hours down the road as well for this service.
That's correct. So the existing service is 6:48 to 6:40 P, Monday through Friday. We're gonna continue during that same timeframe. And then, as I stated before, we're gonna continue to analyze the data and make adjustments as needed and as allowable as, as ridership grows.
Thank you.
To the regular riders, I just acknowledge, and I'm sure the commission would, that the change is difficult, but not having this system would be more difficult. So we, I think we need to take the least difficult route here and support this. So that's my thought on there. Thank you so much for all your work. And are there comments from the audience? If you would go to the microphone, please?
I have a couple of comments. Again, I'm Darcy Bisker. First of all, Commissioner Tackett, thank you very much for attending the meeting today. I think one of the things that you could see is that people are confused. And while the city of Springfield may be communicating through their website, through Facebook, through the commission meeting itself, it seemed to me from the meeting today that the bus-riding community was not well communicated with. They're confused. It seems like there's been, obviously, your elected officials and you've put a lot, and good businessmen and women, and you've put a lot of thought into this. It seems like a great solution, but I have a question. How did costs double in a year or two while ridership went down? Is that bad management or bad planning? And I think that those are the responsibilities of the commission.
Actually, we don't run the busing system.
Well, to know
Just so you know, we have, we have
To be the commissioner mayor, to, to know what that problem is.
Understand.
Yes, even though you may not be directly in charge, it certainly is under your purview.
No, this is, this is why we're taking action now. You're right.
Well, you're taking action, but I'm not sure I understand what the, how that problem was created. And I wonder, I want to make sure that there's oversight in planning and management that doesn't allow costs to go up while readership, ridership is going down. And I wonder how the commission of the city of Springfield has encouraged public transportation. Ridership has gone down, but again, how are you speaking to the bus-riding community? Again, this seems like a great solution. However, having children riding in private cars that are not state or city employee, you know, employees, seems significant. Not having those services vetted, although I'm sure it's something that, that you must go through, having your drivers vetted to that
Ma'am, if you want to direct your comments to me, these are not, these are not city employees or state employees. These are contracted employees.
I mean, the people who will be driving the, the citizens.
They'll be their, their employees. It'll be just like the current transit company that manages the bus system, the new company, it will be their employees.
Yes.
So I, I hear you. I mean, I do hear you.
They're not, they're not public servants, is my point. And I hope that there'll be some oversight of that.
Sure. There has to be.
Of course, but I haven't heard anything about it. So there's, there will be, but I, I wonder how that'll happen.
Right, that's done through the provider, the company Via. I'm sure that
That's why I looked over to them.
Right, right. They're not going to
They're right there. It's the CEO and COO. But also, I have a question. If we're saving money for the city of Springfield, and eighty percent of the dollars for transportation in the city are coming from the federal government, let's just say that things are status quo, where will the savings be also used for transportation purposes in Springfield? In what way will those savings be allocated to help the citizen? So those are my questions.
Thank you. John?
What's gonna happen when you get, you have 16 fans, and you have 25 people that go for a ride? Somebody's gonna get stuck. And I pray, I hope, there's nobody that needs to go to the hospital or to their doctor. That's all. Thank you.
I'm curious, has there been any communication or consideration for extending the hours of the public transportation?
I think the one thing that we heard in the presentation, Baron, was that if there is a need to extend these hours or change these hours through the data that is collected with the new system, they will absolutely do that. If there's, if there's constant riders at seven o'clock, I believe they'll, they'll, they'll shift and do that. And they need to collect that data.
As you know, I worked with a lot of the homeless, and they get employed, and, and we're scrambling to get them. They, they want to work, and they get out the door. And they're like, man, I don't have a ride home, you know, and, you know, I gotta walk all the way back to the shelter. And so we've been kind of helping that out, man. And man, that would be way, way, I mean, yeah, maybe schedule it, you know?
And that's what this, yeah.
Okay, I, I wasn't there. I was busy on my food truck.
One of the questions that I asked very early on was, would this company contract with private businesses to provide that service for their employees? The answer was yes. So if
Why would a private business pay for it if the city's going to?
If a local company wishes to contract with this organization, the one we're looking at now, and provide that as a fringe benefit to their employees, to be picked up, brought to work, then to be taken home from to be picked up, brought to work, then to be taken home from work, this company is willing to do that. And I think it would be a win for the company because they will have more dependable employees who won't have to rely on their own cars, flat tires, car won't start, whatever. And it's a win for the employee. So yes, they are willing to do that.
And it would be a win for the city to take the initiative to offer that.
We're trying to, we're trying to, so it's a, you know, it's a expenditure revenue issue. We have so many dollars that we can devote to it. Right now, we are fortunate that we get 80% of the system. But as Mr. Vi had stated, our local share has more than doubled over the last several years. It's not that it's creating a savings, but right now, the current system for the number of riders, it's not sustaining the system. And we do not have additional dollars to put into the system to grow the system. We are hopeful, under this new model, this microtransit model that is not approached on fixed route, which doesn't help. If your business isn't on a fixed route, that doesn't help your employees, right? So this provides more flexibility, more efficient and effective service in delivering to the entire community in which it serves. And so we're hoping by increased ridership, less overall operational costs. So as Mr. Vi, I think, stated, you know, those diesel buses cost about a half million dollars. These minivans are significantly less. So the capital investments that are needed to be made, that can be invested back into the system itself. And yes, hopefully, expanding hours of operation is key. Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
And what we're doing within this vote is exactly what you're asking and other asking, others are asking is to make a decision that we can have a sustainable transportation system. Ma'am?
Monica Lassiter.
Thank you.
Again, thank you, Ms. Tackett, for being at that meeting today. My concern is you can get six people in this van, being picked up at different areas and going at different areas. How does that affect me being late for work? Because I don't want to lose my job. I can't afford to lose my job. I'm a single person in my household working.
I think this is a point A to point B. So if you've got to get from your home or the vicinity of the pickup to your work, I believe that's what happens. Ma'am, if you were going to speak, ma'am, you want to speak, you can speak in the microphone.
I think from all of the things that we've learned throughout this process, what happens is, is if you know that you need a ride somewhere, then you know what time, there's a timeframe, right? What was it, an hour or is it two hours, Jason? Like you put it into the app when you request your ride. You do that with enough window to, so that you're getting to work on time. So the software is what makes sure that you get there. So if you say, I want to request a ride to Walmart where I work at, right? And I live on Tibbetts Avenue. So, and I need to be there at 8:00. So you're going to put that in there at, you're not going to wait until 8:00, you know, 7:45 to put that in there. You're going to put it in in a timely manner, then that way you're there in time. So it wouldn't be a matter of picking someone up or waiting for someone if someone's not there. Because if you're, if you're late for Uber, that Uber is gone. So if you're not out there for your pickup, that pickup's not going to wait for that person if they're not out there, making you guys or who else, other riders, late for their next appointments. And that's where we look at that software and understand how powerful it is and all of the information that they provided to us to handle those things like that.
Commissioner Brown, I'm sorry. You had mentioned that you were not successful in riding the bus. And the 500 or so people that do regularly, one of the issues is that they know that they'll be at the stop, at the stop at 2:15 and they'll arrive at their location at 3:15. However, with additional riders being picked up, like you said, maybe the driver's not going to wait for that driver if they, if they're not ready to be picked up. At the same time, there's just not that same certainty that the riders now experience. And I also want to comment, when you've been talking about these increased costs and decreased ridership, as well as the average being so low, under five people per ride, it's very important to remember that this room is currently being occupied at 50%. But if you took the hours of the day, this room has only had, on average of the 24 hours, five people in it per hour. So while we're taking the statistics of the, that have been considered, I understand. Hopefully, they've really been considered. Because at 6:00 AM, there may only be four riders or zero. And at 4:00 PM, there's 20. And that's one of the things that the bus riders are concerned about. And also, I think that, that, that lack of certainty, if you have it in this system, excellent. Communicate it to the bus riders. They're not feeling it. They're not sure how they're going to get through.
I want to say that this is one thing that Commissioner Tackett brought back to our understanding is that there needs to be yet another way to inform the riders. And that is with some print information that she suggested that we do.
And the bus stops are an ideal place because that's where the bus riders are.
This was new information to us.
And also, you know, posters, again, you know, it's, it shouldn't be new information if you've been studying this for four years, sir.
Well, ma'am, everybody, everybody learns things and changes when they hear it. And that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, well, I understand there's going to be a vote, though. And I think that maybe there's, needs time for more consideration for the people who are actually affected, not the people just managing the budget or managing the process.
Thanks for your comment.
Certainly. And thank you for, as a mayor, I hope that you would, you do appreciate the comment.
I, I'm-
Yeah, I just want to make sure. It's sometimes, it doesn't feel-
I just, I feel like our conversation's done. Thank you.
I feel rushed and I-
Thank you.
I think it's important.
I know, but, and you are important and we've been listening to you. Thank you so much. Okay, is there comments from the audience? Okay, clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Rue? Declaring it necessary to require the construction or reconstruction of curbs, gutters, and sidewalks at the points identified as section number one of the streets of the 2025 Selma Road and East Main Street Sidewalk, Curb, and Gutter Program.
Don't move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded are the comments from commissioners. Dr. Estrop?
I received a phone call and then talked to somebody personally. If people have questions about how this is going to work or payment, who within the city should they contact?
Yes, commission, as this relates to our sidewalk curb and gutter program that's run through our service department, they could reach out to 937-525-5800 and they will get directed to the appropriate staff member.
Okay, that's great. I appreciate that information. Thank you.
Comments from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Just a minute, please. If you have a, go ahead, if you want to stand up there and speak. If you want to go ahead and speak from the podium, please, sir.
What Craig just said. Guys, I'm known as the curb and gutter guy. Come on, call that number. I've been doing it two years.
Yeah, and Mr. Seelig, we have told you that if you would like us to assess your property, like these individuals are being assessed, then we can do that and then it will be assessed to your property taxes.
Brian, for two years, I've been trying to get curb and gutter.
Would you like us to assess your property? We can do that. We have talked to you about that. Yes, as these individuals are too. We're not paying for these individuals. We are assessing them and it gets assessed to their property taxes. So if you would like us to do that, as we, we have informed you that we can do that.
At a cost to me.
Yes, just as is-
All property owners are responsible for their sidewalks and curbs.
I'm already paying for it, paying for a sewer, storm sewer system that is, that doesn't work. It's not working. It's, for two years I've been down here, it's almost a joke. I'll wait till 198-24 comes up and wait. I will have comment on that.
And hang out up there. Other comments from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Rue? Confirming purchases and the obtaining of services for the city and providing for payments therefore and declaring an emergency therein.
Don't move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Comments from commission, from the audience? Clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mr. Rue?
Yes.
Providing for the issuance and sale of notes in the maximum aggregate principal sum of $1,140,600 in anticipation of the issuance of bonds to pay the cost of constructing sidewalk, curbs, and gutters comprised in the 2024B Sidewalk, Curb, and Gutter Program at various locations throughout the city and declaring an emergency therein.
Don't move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded are the comments from commission. Dr. Estrop?
Thank you. What are we, how is this different than what we considered before?
Yes, Commissioner, so this is setting up the bond anticipation note for work that was done as part of the 2024 Sidewalk, Curb, and Gutter Program. So what we do is we issue right now an internal note that is utilized for, again, the sidewalk curb and gutters that are repaired by our contractor. So we make that payment and then we assess those property owners over a 10-year period. This will eventually be rolled into a larger bond issuance. And then as we collect payments from the property tax assessments for those individual properties, that helps go towards paying down that bond.
As I recall, it used to be less than 10 years. Am I correct?
Yes, commission, we used to assess it over a five-year period with the sharp increases or the drastic increases to concrete prices. We felt it was important to move that to a 10-year assessment so that it spreads it out over a longer period of time and makes that payment or that assessment on the property taxes lower for those property owners.
So if I have work that has to be done on my property, on the curbs and gutter, the city contracts with a company to do the work, they do the work, and then the city pays them through this bond issuer note that we're issuing?
Yes, so first, a property owner has provided the opportunity to obtain their own contractor, if they would like, to have the work done. Then we build the program based off of the work that's not completed by the individual property owners ahead of time. And then we would have our contractor, our sidewalk curb and gutter, through a bid process selected. And then they would go out and complete the work. We would pay for that overall contract amount. And then again, it's assessed to the property owners because we're each as property owners responsible for our curb, gutter, and sidewalks. And then as we collect those payments that are paid through that assessment on the property tax bill, we use that to pay down the note or the bond issuance.
If I want to do the work myself, I could, but I have to meet, I suspect, city standard because you don't want to be throwing down some concrete.
Yeah, the contractor would still be required to pull a permit to do the work. They would do that through the service department. And there are specifications that they have to follow for curb, gutter, and sidewalk.
How long has this, the whole thing been in force and effect, you remember?
All I can tell you is we were doing it in 1998 when I started.
So it's been around a while. This is not a new plan that we're putting in.
No.
Thank you very much.
Aaron?
Help me understand this, guys. It's just an insurance when you're going to, you're going to fill the gap. We'll use me for an example. You're going to go put curbs, gutters, and sidewalks would greatly improve my neighborhood, by the way. You're going to pay the contractor. You put it out for bid. You're going to pay the contractor and then you're going to bill me on my taxes for it. Where, so where is this $1,140,600 ultimately? I'm, I assume that there's some people that just don't pay it.
Well, if somebody is delinquent on their property taxes and that, an assessment is part of that property taxes, yes, we would face that. But it is, it stays with the property. And so let's say that property eventually goes into tax foreclosure because they're not paying their property tax bill. That includes the assessments on there. So at some point, somebody will pay or buy that.
Where did, where did the money come from, Brian, to do the kickouts? Where did that, did the cemetery right there where it kicked out in front of Mother Stewart's and all that? Where, that curb and gutter? Where, where'd that money come from?
Yeah, that was paid for through a state grant, a safety fund grant.
Are there any state grants that can come into my neighborhood and keep my property from washing away every time it rains?
There are not.
None.
And if you want to bring that up with your state legislators, legislators, you can.
Nah, I think I'm just going to pull some gravel in and build a, build a wall around my property. I, I don't know what else to do. I mean, we're in the rainy season right now. I invite you, and I have several times.
I've been out there and I have looked at it. And I've looked at the properties that are, the new houses that were built. And you said, well, they, you know, the, the several hundred thousand dollar houses and the curb and gutter, that developer paid for that curb and gutter that was installed.
There's no curb and gutter there.
There's gutter there.
No.
Oh. In front of the new houses.
He might have put a storm sewer in.
Yeah.
He might have paid to put a storm sewer in. But that doesn't affect my side at all.
Well, I understand that. I'm just saying that is our property owner cost. So again, we are willing to work with you and we can assess it over your property taxes to put that in if that's how you would like us to proceed.
And that's the only option?
For any, for any property owner, Baron, for any property owner.
All right, just making sure.
Not just you.
I'll, I'll get, I'll get some equipment there tomorrow and I'll fix the problem myself.
As long as it meets the standard and you pull a permit, that's fine.
I don't need a-
You have to have a permit because these are curbs and gutters.
No, I'm not going to build curbs and gutter.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not.
We're trying to work with you, trying to work with you.
Rob, my property floods every time. The three storm sewers they have there are not functional. They're misengineered. Been 38 years in the construction business, telling you, I know. So it's no big deal. I'm just going to build a mound, isolate my property, so, and it's going to push it down the street. You know, and it's going to be another problem where they, they asphalted one of them shut. And since then, it's been nothing but grief, nothing but grief on my property. I can't, it washes through the center of my property. I have video. And Brian, you've been out there. You see what the gully is going down through, you know what I mean? And kids can't ride their, their toys. My grandkids can't ride their toys in the yard for the, for the gully walk. You know, maybe I'll just put a retention pond in. I, I don't even know. I'm just frustrated, especially in the rainy season right now that we're in. I pay to put gravel in, it washes out, goes into the, into the, I don't know what that, that little creek, the little storm thing down there. And I keep doing it and doing it, thousands, I've spent thousands. And it's just a mucky mess, man. And I keep, okay, there's no money, I get it. We'll do what we can, you know? And I changed a little bit, you know, I put a little gravel at the end of that driveway and I stopped it from going down there, but now it just rolls to the other side. There's too much water coming down through there. And it all, I'm right there at the head of, I catch it all. I catch every bit of.
All right, Baron.
I'm out when it's raining. Thanks.
Mr. Rue, I'd like to call the question to a vote.
Okay, clerk, call the roll.
Mrs. Houston?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Dr. Estrop?
Yes.
Mrs. Tackett?
Yes.
Mr. Rue? Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with A and B Asphalt Corporation for the CLA CR 374/333-00.79/10.66 project, also known as Springfield Resurfacing Fiscal Year 26 Project, PID number 118635, for an amount not to exceed $1,328,922.30 and declaring an emergency therein.
Don't move.
Second.
Been moved and seconded.